Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the first budget hearing for the proposed 2021 budget. We will have budget hearings through the month of August, and I just want to note that we have two councillors joining by teleconference, councillors Kylie and Brecky. And I do want to note, just for the order of business, as we go through each subitem, we're going to take questions for the presenters so that we can let them go, and then they don't have to stay for the entire hearing. So as we go through them, we'll entertain questions based on the department that they covered. So, let's get started. It's going to be a big day. We're going to start with item A, Finance Overview, by Director Sean Pritchett. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today, starting off our budget hearings, which will be happening throughout the month of August, and eventually moving forward with budget adoption in the month of September. I do want to take just a moment of personal privilege to show appreciation and to thank the staff of the Finance Department, as well as the other departments, but specifically the Finance Department, in what was a particularly tough year related to the pandemic. I think we lost at least a month worth of time in developing the budget, yet developed and submitted the capital program and the budget over a week early for each of those items before they were due. And amongst that, completely redesigned the budget book, which was no small feat. And I hope that you have found it to be useful in the redesign. We tried to make it more user-friendly, not just for the council as a decision-making document, but also for the general public as well, so that the public can easily distinguish what the changes are and where the funds from their city are being invested. So, I sincerely appreciate the high quality and caliber of work that went into preparing that. So with that, I'm going to jump forward into just a general overview of all the financial pieces that come to play as part of the 2021 proposed budget. And then, once we go through that and then the general HR presentations, then we'll start going through the various departments as well and starting to get into the more specific items related to the budget. But, just in terms of an overall overview, financial responsibility. Having a solid plan, maintaining financial balance are key to being able to adapt when necessary. And you can see from today's current environment, the city didn't have to overreact and make striking cuts to our budget. We have had the financial ability to pause, plan, balance, and adapt through the pandemic of this year. This budget before you was very strategic, and it was mindful of the current environment. This budget focuses on being well-balanced, investing in our public safety and health, infrastructure, as well as engaging people. Our total budget, as you can see, in terms of expenditures, proposed is $593.6 million. First thing I'm going to speak to is on the revenue side. Of course, many would expect that a majority of our budget is paid for with taxes, and while a significant portion of our budget, approximately 41% is actually, when you look at the totality of all of the city's funds, is generated, those revenues are generated from taxes. About 27% come from charges for goods and services, and 32% is everything else. We'll talk a little bit more about expenditures here in a moment, but on the operating side, we're approximately $260 million of operating proposed for 2021 and $236 million for capital, with the remainder of about $98 million related to the internal service funds. And again, we'll cover each of those components individually. The total budget is built on a variety of revenue sources. Taxes are a large percentage of those revenues, providing for the street infrastructure, public safety and health, culture and recreation, and entertainment access. And you can see, as I spoke, 41% of the budget is made up of taxes, but 27% of all revenues come from charges for goods and services, which is a large part due to the self-supporting enterprise funds and the internal service funds, where demand for services are based on those charges. These also include water, sewer, parking, among others. You can reference this. This is in your budget book, but this, again, kind of illustrates the distribution of funds between operating and capital, and those are the two main categories in which you see the budget. The city budget being divided in those. I will discuss each of these areas and how they come together for a balanced plan, adding up to the $593.6 million. And as I noted, you can see this on page six of the budget book that was prepared for you on July 21st. If you look at the distribution here between those two main components, operating and capital, the city's financial strength is not a coincidence. The city pays close attention to maintaining this balance, ensuring that the balance meets the everyday needs of our operations, but also meets the needs of investing in our infrastructure, not only for today, but for those years to come forward. We put this together, and I thought this was a nice illustration. As you're aware, we use fund-based accounting. And so, each fund acts like its own checking account, tracking revenues and expenditures for a specific purpose. As you can see, most of those tax-supported funds, which are on the top portion of this slide, those primarily go to operating expenses. So, you can see the general fund there sits at the proposed amount of $186 million, and 100% of that is operating-related. Your sales tax fund is $81 million, and that's primarily 100% capital-related. And then you can see the various other smaller funds, storm drainage, transit, entertainment tax. All of those are kind of a mix of both operating and capital. And then your housing fund and your TIF and other revenue funds, those are primarily operating. The other piece of that is then, the other side is the user-fee supported. So these are your enterprise funds and so forth that are not tax-supported or appropriated. Those include public parking, power and distribution, landfill, water, and of course, water reclamation. And you can see kind of the mix of the size of those funds, as well as their distribution of capital versus operating. Probably what sticks out there is water reclamation. Clearly, this is a big capital and building year for water reclamation. So, as it was last year and for the next several years, it'll be sizably larger than typical just because of the water reclamation plant expansion. And those numbers really do generate some of the more significant increases that you see in the budget request for the year. This slide breaks down that operating budget, and this is across the city in all funds. And it shows you, it gives you kind of a visual representation of the distribution of where the funds are going. Almost 50% of all operating funds go to essential services, such as police, fire, streets, and parks. On the capital side of the equation, you can see the distribution graphically and visually here, how it spreads between all the capital investments that the city is making. With the primary portion, you can see water reclamation representing almost 40% of the total capital expenditures when you put all of the funds together. Again, you're seeing the impact of that water reclamation expansion. But you also see the city's continued investments in highways and streets, representing nearly $66 million, or about 28% of all the capital expenditures for the city. And then finally, when you roll them both together, you can see how the funds are distributed across the entirety of the city in those investments. So combining both the operating and capital budgets for 2021, again, you see over 50% of the service budget is going to utility infrastructure, highways and streets, and public safety and health. Below there is a set of highlights. Many of those were addressed as part of the mayor's presentation to the council a couple of weeks ago. And they will be items that will be discussed more fully in each of the individual presentations that will be coming forward in the budget hearings to come. Finally, the last piece of this, and the parts that we don't always think about are those internal service and trust funds. Balance means having a functional structure that provides consistency to the key annual expense areas. Ensuring our employee benefit commitments are well-funded, and we are reasonably maintaining and planning ahead for city buildings, equipment, and technology. The city's five internal service funds and the pension trusts play a key role in these areas. The pension trust remains healthy in terms of the funding, and like the South Dakota State Retirement System, remains a leader among its peers in terms of its performance, and something that I think as a community, we take a lot of pride in that. You will notice in the citywide allocation of technology charges throughout these impacts throughout the departmental budgets. Even though individual budgets are recognizing changes, the net impact is fairly neutral, with a decrease in transfers from the general fund as an offset. And I bring this forward because you are going to see in each of the individual budgets some significant increases in rentals. This is where that technology charge back to the departments is flowing through. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how it's actually net-neutral overall, but I'll talk a little bit about that because it has to do with a transfer that we used to do from the general fund that we wouldn't be doing going forward, and everything would flow through the departments. So, you can also see that there is a new centralized facilities fund. This fund follows the same concepts that we've had with both our fleet and our technology fund. This fund will ensure that city-owned buildings are proactively managed and maintained, focusing on cyclic maintenance, operational use, and major capital upgrades. This fund will help us manage our facilities in a more centralized manner and ensure the longevity and the usefulness of our buildings. So this gives you kind of a list of what we consider those that would flow through the centralized facilities management fund. Here you can see what would be included. This includes the 12 fire stations, law enforcement center, five city libraries located within the city limits, the street and fleet campus, all of our downtown administrative buildings, including the Carnegie that we're currently in, our park shop campus, and several of our enterprise-based facilities that are non-plant-related. So those are all comprised within our central facilities management piece. The centralized facilities fund will account for all of these expenses and charge back the departments based on service demands and future needs. Each department budget will still reflect the total cost of operating their facility, which includes custodial and maintenance staffing, repair and maintenance, supplies and utilities. The key piece that I would point out here is that this is, again, revenue net-neutral to our departments. So, most of these were within their departments, and then were managed out of departments pulling little pieces of it out. This also creates kind of a duplication in how the funds are in the budget. So you appropriate them out of the tax-supported funds. They flow into this new centralized facilities management fund, but then they're budgeted back out again. And so you see about a $5 million increase in the budget just related to the creation of this fund. It is not $5 million of new money. It's just the way that we appropriate the funds. They're essentially double-budgeted. The benefit of this, again, is it's going to give the opportunity to manage priorities throughout the year on a more centralized basis. If emergencies come up, it's going to give the opportunity to prioritize some of those emergencies. And like the technology revolving fund did when it was created over a decade ago, it will help us smooth out some of the variances that we see in the budgeting process from year to year. So, when that technology fund was first created, it was done so in the intent that we were seeing a lot of differentiation in the maintenance and management of our technology throughout the city. When times got tough, the first thing that got cut was technology, and because it was the simple place to be able to cut those funds. But what we ended up having is we'd have computers in one department that were maybe operating Windows 7, and we had computers in another that were operating on a system that was two years newer, just based on the availability of funds for that particular department. You can imagine how difficult that would be to manage if you're an IT department. But what the development of that technology fund allowed us to also do is to be able to set aside funds over the long term that allowed us to make more significant investments more recently. In the last 18 months, you would have, for those that were here, when we moved forward with the acquisition of the asset management system. That was able to do. It was a significant investment for the city, but it didn't occur all in one year because those funds have been set aside over time to be able to manage that. So that is the hope for the centralized facilities fund, is that we're a little bit more proactive in smoothing out some of those changes over time, but also providing an opportunity to prioritize those projects across the city. So, again, it is overall net-neutral, but it does create a new sub-fund, internal service fund specifically for these purposes. If you look at the budget for this, so shown on this slide is the 2021 centralized facility management fund, and you can see the total amount of expenditures being 5.6 million. That's that $5 million kind of duplication, because most of these are charged back to the individual departments. The city is going to invest the 5.7 million in current facilities in 2021 to maintain, upgrade, and operate. We plan on spending $1.6 million on various repair and maintenance needs. This includes 400,000 in cyclic maintenance items, such as flooring, painting, tuck pointing and siding, roofing, and concrete repairs. We are also planning on updating and remodeling a portion of Fire Station Number Eight that was constructed back in 1983, and upgrading the park shop bathrooms as this is the central point to report-to-work facility for the Parks and Rec staff. On the capital side, in 2021, we will be preparing and designing for the much-needed LAC chiller replacement that would be scheduled to occur in 2022 and is included as part of the capital program. We also include upgrading the HVA systems in the Fire Stations Eight and Ten. We will continue to focus on keeping our facilities safe, functional, and well-maintained long into the future. We're going to focus our attention now on specifically the general fund. Clearly, it's our largest fund within the city and the one that funds most of the operations that the public is used to seeing, whether that's their police force, their fire stations, their fire rescue staff, as well as their parks and recreation amenities. About 80% of our general fund is comprised of tax revenues. This is primarily sales and property taxes, and it's about evenly split between the two. So we have scheduled our anticipated revenues, property taxes, $70.8 million in 2021. It's followed by sales taxes, approximately $70 million as well. Then the other components are obviously much smaller. We have lodging and bid tax. That is projected at $3.2 million, and that is entirely passed through to experience Sioux Falls or the Sioux Falls CVB. This slide shows the history and the projected in terms of the growth and the CPI for the property tax. Property taxes are projected to be a more stable revenue source. With this, we have about 2.9% that's projected based on the growth factor for the community and 1.7% related to the inflation factor. The inflation factor, obviously, is a key component of the property tax revenues, and postponing or deferring this increase can have dramatic impact. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a series of slides ahead. But one thing I'd point out here, too, you can see where the growth factor and the CPI is reduced from what we had seen in the previous years. These are based on data that we received from Lincoln and Minnehaha County. So you can see that reduced. As far as the CPI, you can see that's a 1.7% as we've talked about in some of our more recent monthly financial presentations. We know that the CPI has been essentially zero going forward, but this is, there's a delayed effect in here. So, we would see that probably following through into our 2022 budget planning. So the 2020 CPI kind of follows us into 2022. Sales tax revenue is a critical source for the city's budget. As I noted, it's about 50% of the tax revenues that come into the general fund. And this is obviously a little bit more volatile than our property taxes. In terms of our trending on revenues, looking back over the past few years, when assessing the 12-month rolling average, which of course smoothes out the monthly variations of the sales tax receipts, you can see that there's been a moderate upward trend over the last couple of years. Obviously, the current COVID environment has impacted sales tax revenues, and we've had to adapt in 2020 based on those expectations. The 2020 budgeted does project a 4% increase in sales taxes. The 12-month rolling average shows a 3.4% growth, but we must balance our expectations with current collections rate, which is currently a negative 0.8% growth year-over-year through June. With the July numbers, which will be coming out soon, we're essentially at break-even there. The 2021 budget includes a cautious but optimistic sales tax growth of 0% in 2020, and then a 4% growth, hopefully a return to more normal economics here in 2021 at a 4% growth rate. We've been able to adapt when sales tax growth has shrunk after peaking in the late 1990s. In 2008, we experienced negative sales tax growth as a result of the economic recession that occurred at that time. But we did adapt, and we continued our growth as our community. No matter what, our plan and balance allows us to be prepared and adapt to changing circumstances without having significant disruption to our core services. When changes are needed, is it easy? No. We all appreciate our city services and amenities that make our city a great place to live, work, and grow, but we must make sure that we meet our core needs first. If you look specifically at what was budgeted for sales taxes versus actuals, you can see that we've done a pretty good job here over the last several years of estimating what these revenues were. Yes, you will see variations from year to year. That's why we adapt. Principle is so key to maintaining our financial integrity. But in the last five years, between 2015 and 2019, actual sales tax receipts were within 0.4% of our budgeted expectations. And if you look at our 10-year average, it is less than 1% or 0.9% difference. And overall, you can see our actual numbers were always just slightly ahead of what our expectations had been over those periods. When you combine this historically, combining both the sales taxes with all general fund revenues, we also look at those and take all revenues into account. And again, over the last five years, the difference between the budget and actual expenditures was off just 0.6%. On a 10-year basis, we were within 1.6%. And as you can see, again, we were favorable in both of those averages as a result of both of those, during both of those time periods. Again, another visual depiction of how the breakdown flows through with the general fund. The general fund includes $186 million in proposed expenditures. Overall, the budgeted increase for the general fund is 4.5%. Balance means investing in existing as well as new. This includes both people, as well as projects and maintenance. All of these needs need to be balanced. You will see in the next few slides that this budget is primarily driven by public safety. As you can see in the graph above, public safety and health accounts for more than 50% of the budget within the general fund. This is followed by highways and streets accounting for another 15%. Again, these are some of the key areas that were identified in the mayor's presentation and that you will be hearing more about in the various presentations following my own. Bill will talk about the personnel overview and the wage and benefits in just a little bit, but over the next several weeks, as I said, you'll get additional information. But this just gives you a summary list of some of the more significant changes that you see in the budget proposed before you. So you can see a majority of the increase is going to public safety, and this is followed by highways and streets. However, careful consideration of all of our departmental needs were considered when putting together the 2021 budget. The budget needs to be a balanced approach, and the Sioux Falls strategy allows each service area to have their voices and needs heard throughout the budget process. I'll highlight a few of the key ones here because you can see public safety with the highest growth there. That is driven primarily by adding five police officers, two of which are primarily funded by grant funds. We have a new fire station that is moving forward, so we'll be adding 15 additional staff related to that. We have a need for additional support for our Metro 911 contribution, which is about $300,000. We have a new police recruit academy that will be coming forward as part of, not just before, but as part of our public safety campus as well, which will help us achieve greater filling all of our police positions, body cameras. And then we did include approximately $200,000 in part-time related to the special events. We feel that once the police reaches more consistent full staffing, we believe that there will be some savings there achieved on the part-time basis. But we did add an additional $200,000 to make sure, as we kind of watch through this year, to see how that plays out. On the highways and streets side, the increases are driven about $500,000 is driven by wage and benefit adjustments. About $400,000 is a transfer in terms of accident, street light repairs, moving it out of the Street and Lights Fund. So this is basically when somebody runs into a stoplight, and then it's paid for by insurance. So it's pretty much net-neutral to that budget, but it did shift it because it was more appropriate to be under traffic and engineering as opposed to within our power distribution system. So, just a slight adjustment there. And then, under culture and recreation, there was a approximately $300,000 increase in terms of the zoo. I would say $230,000 of that is actually a transfer from the entertainment tax fund. So several years ago, to support an increase to the zoo, a portion of the entertainment tax was attributed to help fund that operating piece. So it was always a very small part of it. For years, we've been talking about trying to move that back to the general fund, so it was more simpler, more administratively simple. And this year, with the entertainment tax taking a more significant hit overall in terms of its revenue, it made sense to finally pull that forward and move that into the general fund. So a majority of that increase for the zoo is driven by just a shifting of which fund it's going to be paid from. If you look at the same budget in a different way, this is by category. You can see that most of the increase in 2021 is related to wages and benefits. This includes adding the five police officers. And then, of course, with opening a fire station next year, adding an additional 15 firefighters, which doesn't happen every year, but does have a more significant change for the budget in particular years when we are opening and adding that many personnel. The majority of the other category increases have revenue or grant offsets. Removing new position costs and netting for the potential grant and revenue offsets in the other categories in the budget, the increase is approximately 2.6% overall. Each year, we budget a small portion of our reserve to support the budgeted expenditures. We do this knowing in part that 1% to 2% of our budget will be turned back due to timing and other factors. In 2021, we have budgeted to use $5.4 million of the reserve funds to support general fund expenditures. However, 1.6 million of this is related to the new fire station, which has been planned for several years and had been part of our projections in terms of the utilization of the general fund reserve. Once this is removed, there is budgeted use of reserves of approximately $3.8 million. And as you will see, that aligns with our actual average of what we budget for reserves. So on this slide here, you can see what our average use of budgeted reserves has been. So we budget about $4 million on average from reserves each year over the past 10 years. However, we have actually ended up adding to reserves on average by about $1.5 million annually when you look at the totality of those 10 years. In some years, like 2015 and 2016, we did require utilization of those reserves, of which some was planned one-time uses. In other years, we added back to reserves, such as we did in the last two years of 2018 and 2019. As our general fund grows, so must too the reserve in order to try to maintain our 25% policy threshold that's been established by this council and followed for many years. The reserve is a key component and one of the most important tools that we have in our ability to adapt. You can see in our 2020 budget, we had budgeted use of reserves of $3.3 million. That was what was approved by the council for 2020. Right now, and we're continuing to revise our projections, we'll continue to do that throughout the rest of this year. Right now, we're projecting about a use of reserves of about $1 million. So, that has been done even in light of some revenue reductions by controlling expenses in various areas. We've also benefited from the fact that we haven't had as much snow removal cost in the earlier part of this year. Yet to be determined how that plays out for the fall, as it's obviously very difficult to predict. This chart here, we show you annually, and this shows the projection of our general fund over the next several years. We always manage to that 25% policy threshold in the reserve to the budget. So, as you can see, it stabilizes. We see reductions of reserves based on projections in 2022, 2023, and stabilizing in 2024. We have a projection for our fire station opening in 2027, and then we do have a projection within our system of some slight increase in the reserves in those out-years of 2028 through 2030. The inflation component, as I mentioned earlier, is a key part of the property tax revenues. Postponing or deferring this inflation increase can have a dramatic impact, particularly in future years. The CPI component of the property tax revenue projection totals $1.1 million for 2021. But over a 10-year period, if you lose this key revenue year after year, and you did not take the inflation in 2021, the net impact over 10 years would be $12 million. It is established policy for the city to maintain a reserve equal to 25% of the general fund. Based on the budget proposed, you can see in the blue bars there that the general fund reserve hovers around that 25% in the next five years and years out. Based on the current modeling, the anticipated expenditures can continue to maintain this 25% reserve policy. However, if the CPI is deferred for just one year, which is shown in the orange bars there, you can see what the impact would have, would have some fairly significant and dramatic impacts in our ability to maintain that policy threshold of 25% in the years ahead. You can see the red line there. That is the projection if you were to defer the CPI every year going forward, and what the impact of the reserve would be for the city of Sioux Falls. And you can see it would be fully depleted again by 2029. So adherence to a long-term vision for financial stability and integrity is critically important. Keeping up with inflation is vital to our ability to adapt and to maintain balance across the city. Next fund that we're going to talk about is, of course, the sales tax fund, and this relates directly to the capital improvements program. This year's capital program reflects a priority to continue allocating more dollars to highways and streets, but we are also mindful of maintaining balance with other key service areas as well. And as the mayor had stated, highways and streets is receiving by far the largest portion and the largest increase in the five-year capital program when you compare it to the previous 10 years in the proportion that is being allocated to highways and streets. As we have discussed as recent as last week, and we will be bringing forward in additional detail next week, of course, is the Community Bond 2020, which will support a 50-year investment into providing modern, state-of-the-art training facilities for both our fire and police department personnel. In addition, the new facility will house the Metro PSAP, our 911 center. This will not only help alleviate growth concerns for Metro 911, but the old facility will be able to use as a backup center. This investment completes the project in its entirety and is a long-term investment that ensures our key personnel are adequately trained and prepared to protect not only the residents of Sioux Falls, but also the region. As we discussed last week, as part of prudently managing debt, it's important to look at ways to save. ways to save. One way we can do that is by paying down debt early or refinancing our existing debt. The city currently has three bonds that have the opportunity to either be refinanced or paid down. Those include the 2009 A Quality of Life Two Bonds, and these were the bonds that were taken out that constructed the junior football fields, Prairie West Library, a portion of the River Greenway, and zoo enhancements. The other two bonds that are open to being prepaid at this time without penalty would be the 2009 B1 and B2 bonds, and those were related to the flood control. A portion of them are tax-exempt, a portion of them are taxable. Taxable portion relate to a special program that was done during the 2008 recession. But in totality, they are approximately twenty-five million dollars. And as I noted previously, the debt service is programmed into the 2021 through 2025 capital program. You've seen this chart a lot, but we'd like to reiterate and perhaps advertise for others the ability of Sioux Falls to manage its debt. As you can see, relative to our peers, we have extremely low debt per capita, oftentimes half what many of our peer communities have. And this does include the Community Bond 2020 or Public Safety Bond debt service. Couple of graphs here that I want to show you. So we have a commitment from this administration to maintaining a balanced and disciplined approach to debt, working to continue to minimize the debt service to less than thirty percent of the available funds that we expend from the sales and use tax fund or from within the capital program. This ensures that we continue to use cash to invest in regular infrastructure improvements while also using debt in a balanced way to fund those long-term investments that will benefit not just the current users, but their future users as well. If you look at this chart, you can see in the orangish line there that that is our current debt service as projected based on their current amortization schedules and being paid down. The green line there shows the percentage of the capital program that would be designated to debt repayment based on the new bond and refinancing the three existing debt for the additional twenty-five million overall. And again, we're going to have additional conversations about this next week when we begin discussing the bond ordinance that would be coming forward. But I did want to highlight this a little bit as we begin those conversations. One of the pieces that I want to talk about is an opportunity that warrants our consideration, and that would be repaying the entirety of the twenty-five million dollars of debt that we're considering refinancing. We do have a potential opportunity that relates to the CARES Act funding that we're receiving. To be careful in the utilization of those funds, for those of you that were with us when the state first announced this funding potential for the city, one of the things that we noted was that we had to be very careful in the utilization of those funds. So we received the funds based on eligible costs that we can be reimbursed for, and it has to be in 2020. Our utilization of those funds, once received, is really up to the city council for making a determination. They are not included in the 2020 budget, and they're not included in the 2021 budget either. But they do provide an opportunity. Because of the way the CARES Act was put together, obviously, when we signed our agreement with the state of South Dakota, we do have some risk in repaying the funds if it's deemed that we utilize them for ineligible purposes. I believe that risk to be fairly low, but it is one that is out there. So in terms of the utilization of those funds, they are one-time funding for the city, so they don't necessarily support commitments to things that would not be supported by an ongoing revenue support. So commitments that would increase the size of our budget with the expectation that we had future revenues to pay for that wouldn't be there. But what they do provide is an opportunity to think strategically about how we manage our cash and how we manage our debt. We don't get a lot of value from our investments of cash, very low interest rate environment, and because we are required to invest in very low-risk investments, primarily CDs and banks and U.S. Treasuries, we don't necessarily generate a large amount of interest income. But we do have the capacity, because we do pay bonds that are at higher interest rates, to take some of that cash availability and invest it in repaying this, some of these proceeds. And what that does, as you can see in the yellow line there, is it buys down our debt service in future years to the point where essentially we are not taking on significantly more debt service and debt service payments than we had in prior years, or if we did nothing and did not borrow at all or construct the public safety facility. There are a number of benefits that would come from this, far in excess of just being prudent about our debt management, but it would help to free up capital dollars in future years. It would go a long way in reducing our interest expenses, and it does continue our practice of rapidly paying off debt because it allows us to accelerate our repayment of the new public safety bond. So in net-net, with a new bond of fifty million dollars, if we did have the capacity to repay the twenty-five million dollars in bond, our borrowing net is about twenty-five million dollars total. As I said, we will be happy to answer any questions on this, but we will be continuing to discuss this further as we go forward. There is no action item here. There actually wouldn't even necessarily need to be an action item at the time that we do the bond. We can keep our options open to refinance. We don't plan to fund the bond until later this fall. It will require action of the city council should we decide that we're going to repay those bonds at some future date. So that would be an actionable item that would come forward, and we'll have those discussions as we would get closer to the funding of the bond. But we'll have ongoing discussions about that over the next several months as well. Another way to look at this in terms of debt service is as a percentage of our sales tax revenue, kind of shown again in the last slide, but not mostly on percentages. So you can see the size of our projections for the capital program or for the capital fund, the sales and use tax fund. And you can see in that orangish line, that's our current debt schedule. In the black dotted line, that is the proposed debt service that would include the public safety bond, but also includes repaying the debt. And you can see how closely they're matching each other, but you can also see how much smaller our proposed debt becomes relative to the size of our sales and use tax fund. And what that essentially means is additional funds, additional availability of cash to pay for investments in highways and streets and other quality of life improvements. And finally, the last way to look at it, we add that line there, you can see with the red dots and the yellow line. That's our policy set by the city council that we would maintain at least two times debt service coverage for our debt service payments. And you can see what it's been in 2015, 2017, 2019, but then you can see with the proposed debt service going forward where it would be even including the Community Bond 2020 or the Public Safety Bond. As a finance department, we seek to adhere to the core principles that have allowed the city of Sioux Falls to achieve our current financial strength. And that strength has not been built in a day. Instead, it is something that has been built over many years and is centered around a conservative yet forward-looking approach to financial management. It's a blessing to be in such a strong position, but remain vigilant to ensure that policies and strategies pursued both support and grow that strength, taking care not to allow nearsighted actions or objectives to distract or detract us from the core principles that have gotten us to where we are here today. We have shown this over the last year in particular with the impacts of the floods, the tornadoes, and of course, recently, the COVID pandemic. Our strength is based on developing and executing a thoughtful plan. Our flexibility and ability to adapt makes us nimble and able to respond to unforeseen events without jeopardizing our financial integrity. I think that's kind of a critically important piece because I think, I don't know that we appreciate the fact that we, as a community, are very unique and that we do not have to pull back on our investments, not just in services, but for infrastructure for our community, and that supports our local economy, especially in times such as this. And underlying all of this, and most importantly, is the concept of balance. Combining all of these three simple yet core principles for the adherence of maintaining balance is what separates Sioux Falls from our peers. During the month of August, various departments will be presenting their budgets in more detail. It is anticipated that the public hearing for the budget would be held on September eighth and moving forward with adoption on September fifteenth. With that, before I turn this over to Bill O'Toole to discuss the personnel aspects of the budget, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have related to the materials here or other items in the budget.
Questions from the council. Councilor Erickson?
I'm flipping back, sorry. The centralized facilities fund, I just want to ask a couple of questions about that. Councilor Jensen mentioned something similar to the questions as we were talking about it last week, and so, I mean, this is great. This is, I think it's a really good step to make sure that we are planning and taking care of our facilities because we have quite a bit. Do you have a general percentage of what you would like that to be at, or a dollar amount of, obviously, it's going to take a little bit to build that up, but is it, hey, we'd like it to be two percent of the budget? We'd like twenty million dollars in there? What is your idea for that?
You know, initially, it's not going to build up big balances. I mean, it's going to take a little time to start establishing it and building it up over time. So a while back, we hired a company, seems like an odd name, called Facility Dude. And they went around and assessed many of our general facilities and identified a long-range plan for what the both deferred and future maintenance needs might be. So part of what we've been working on is related to that plan and catching up on some deferred maintenance items. So we'll be leaning on that plan. We're going to be revisiting that again. And so part of the planning for that, you know, this is the initial year, so we get it established and begin the process and the mechanics of having the fund, but then we'll be looking at not just a percentage, but really looking at a more comprehensive and complex analysis of what our needs are for our facilities over the long term and then backing into what those needs would be in terms of funding mechanism.
Right, perfect, thank you. And then one other question about that is, does this fund, is it housed in under your review, or where is it housed? Who's the director in charge of it, so to speak?
So much like most of our funds, like our technology fund, our fleet fund, they don't really specifically fit under necessarily department, but because it really ties in, so technology ties in obviously with IT, fleet relates to the fleet fund. So they primarily work related to that. Since facilities falls underneath finance, it would fall primarily under finance to manage it.
Okay, that makes sense, too. I'll stand by for now. Thank you for your presentation, too.
Counselor Sale, and then we'll go to Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Just a comment on that centralized facilities fund. It might look good on the balance sheet and the cash flow. That's a lot of money exchanging hands, but to charge one department to pay another department, my example would be this. My wife asks me to mow the lawn, and I charge her fifty dollars, and she pays me out of my joint account. The next day, I go to the bank and deposit that money back into my joint account. That's what you're doing here, and I understand how accountants work, and good for you, but I'm going to move on. You projected a sales tax projection of seventy point one million dollars for 2021. Do you know offhand what the projection was for 2020?
For 2020, I believe we had projected three percent for this year. You have to correct me if I'm wrong. Did we have four for this year as well? Yeah, so we were at four percent for this year.
Four percent. So at the end of 2020, will we, based on what you said here, we're going to be at zero percent growth for sales tax or somewhere close to that?
So, but I will back that off just a little bit. So that projection of four percent was based off our projection for where 2019 would land. 2019 landed higher than we anticipated. So actually, to meet the four percent, we would have to grow one and a half percent this year. So we're not as far off from that projection as we might say.
That's a good, okay. I remember at the beginning of this year, we had some extra money, and we allocated some for ski left and the fire station, and we also put one point seven into our reserves, which I'm very happy we were able to do that. In your slide, if I could run you back to slide twenty-two or twenty-one. And there you were talking about the sales tax budget to actuals, and you talked that we were very close in our ten-year and our five-year average. And I will just say that my observations is I'm very cautious to where we're going to be yet at the end of this year and how much difference that was going to be. Now, if this is a high point of your, how you can budget, and then we throw 2020 in there, I think it's going to be significantly different, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to four percent. And the use of reserves in 2020, you said, was projected at one point six is good. My last observation, you talked about the community bond, and if we do not roll any other bonds in there, I would certainly appreciate if we just started talking about the public safety bond because that's what it actually will be when we're done.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'll just make one comment on your first question or comment. With the technology fund and like the fleet fund, so we do assess back to the departments based on their needs. So like the technology fund is trued up, you know, so we reset it based on what the identified technology utilization of each of the departments is. So it's not necessarily like your department pays that department or this, but you do establish balances over time, and with that, you do have the opportunity to adapt to certain projects that come up. Yep.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll feel like I'll chase a couple of rabbits here in a minute, but I'm kind of in a couple of different directions that we're headed. One of the things that you talked about was the addition of body cams for the police department. Are we looking at additional FTEs? I know the county has two full-time employees, and then in their budget process, they've added a third person to deal with the bulk of the data or the video as part of that. How do we plan on handling that part of it? And I know I'll get deeper with Chief Burns, but I'm looking more at this point, are we adding FTEs? Are we reassigning people? How are we dealing with that part of it?
I would defer that to Chief Burns as he would. We didn't plan for additional FTEs as related to that. Obviously, we have five additional FTEs, three growth and two grant-funded, but I'd defer to him. He can speak more clearly on that, so.
Because that would be my follow-up point with that at least, and again, we can talk to the chief about it. But I'm concerned that we're not even applying for grants or paying for the funding for the body cameras that we're using local tax money. I mean, it all ends up in the same place. I mean, our residents pay, whether it's federal, state, or local, by the time they're done, but it seems like an expense that there's plenty of grant money if you do. I'm not a rocket scientist, but I can Google quickly and come up with several projects. I've watched the news that Rapid City yanked, and I know there are two right off the top of my head, that their body cameras were paid for with Department of Justice grant funding. And so that ability to take care of those expenses from the front end, I think, would make more sense rather than including it.
Can I make one quick response on that? So yes, I think that's accurate, and in fact, we budgeted it to be primarily grant-driven. So we anticipated the need was there. There's obviously been a lot of discussions about this at the federal level. We expect that the federal government will probably be coming out with additional grant opportunities related to webcams. So it is net neutral. We have anticipated an offsetting amount of grants equal to that amount in the budget.
Perfect, thank you. If I can, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to go one other. With the CARES Act funding, I know when it was originally promised to the city from the state, the mayor had made a comment about that we probably wouldn't need the entire amount, and I'm kind of looking for a pencil sketch of kind of where we're thinking that we would use the forty-one and a half million. I know that it's very appealing to pay off additional debt, but the purpose of the funds are keeping the economy moving, and I want to balance that, but I'm hoping that we can at least here shortly have kind of a rough idea of what your department's thinking or how the administration plans on spending that and what direction we're heading and then kind of how it goes. But I promise I won't say anything about the police and fire training facility when we talked about a budget between twenty and thirty million, and we're in that fifty range. So I'll drop that if you give me an idea, and I won't hold you to numbers where we're kind of penciling out the CARES fund. But I think from a policy standpoint, as a council, we're going to need, you know, I mean, we have to spend this before the end of the year or have a plan, and this is kind of that point where we need to at least have some rough numbers of how we kind of visualize that going forward.
There's a couple of responses to that. First, it's not necessarily a need-based, and that may seem counterintuitive, but it's eligible expense-based. So would we have eligible expenses between now and the end of the year in which to qualify for this? So those eligible expenses are driven by things that have been stipulated by the U.S. Treasury and the state of South Dakota. So it's taken us some time to go through to determine whether we could take most of that funds, and it's looking increasingly optimistic that we would, based on eligible expenses, we have either incurred or planned already to have incurred by the end of the year. Then it becomes the expenditure utilization of those funds really is dissected from the actual CARES Act itself. So how those funds are expended is really a matter of fiduciary responsibility and determination by the council. So those discussions will be coming forward, but there is kind of a clear distinction. It is a little bit confusing, but it's eligible expense-driven. So like public safety facility, building it would not be an eligible expense. Paying down debt is not an eligible expense. We utilize it an eligible expense to receive the funds that we might have already had budgeted, and then the utilization of those funds as one-time funds for other purposes. That's a determination of the city council. It's not necessarily dictated by the CARES Act.
Nope, totally agree. That's good for now. Thank you. Those were great explanations.
Any questions on the phone?
Not hearing any, so I just have a couple of comments. The budget book, the redesign is fabulous. I've...
I've, I think it's great. I will just say, it's even, you know, just having, having pictures and charts rather than just pages and pages of numbers. It's just less daunting for just the general public and somebody who's not, you know, an accounting major. So well done to the department on the redesign. So appreciate that. The centralized facility fund, it sounds, it's much like we do with fleet. It's sound, essentially, there's, there's like a charge in the budget for the revolving. And then there's also, so is this yearly, would that be a line item in each department's budget based on their projected or their historical use? Or?
A certain amount would be budgeted for centralized facilities management, and then they would be charged back to the departments based on need. So this includes all of your custodians and all of your maintenance individuals. So, you know, a lot of that gets charged, most, most of those custodians obviously get charged back to the various departments, except for general facilities. That's a different, say, division or budgeted area. We'll talk about that here toward the end of the presentation. But it does flow back, just like fleet and technology funds do as well. The one piece that I forgot to mention in my presentation, and I, I do want to hit it before you get to, I apologize. I do want to hit this before many of the departments come forward. I need to explain that technology rentals change. And it's predominantly related to, if you look at this slide here, so you can see transfers are down $700,000. So what we had done previously is, yes, we charged back to the technology fund from each of the departments, but we also made an $800,000 transfer from the general fund outside of the departments directly to the technology fund as part of the budget. So we've removed that and just gone back to charging the departments directly. So it's increased what departments pay, but net-net, it has no impact on the general fund. But it goes back to the department. So again, you'll see those rental charges coming up. That's going to be a reoccurring theme you're going to see in every budget this year. It is just offsetting the 800,000 that was previously transferred. So sorry about that.
Okay, thanks. And then I don't know if anybody has a historical knowledge or could look back. Do we know when the frontage tax was created? And if it was, if there was some sort of codified earmarking of what it's used for? Or could you tell me what you use it for? Is it very specific? It can, is it like, it can only be used for street cleaning and things like that? Or?
You know, that's probably a little bit out of my wheelhouse. I don't know if we have a comment, or we can get back to you with a response. Street maintenance primarily. Do you know what year it was developed in? No. Goes back quite a while.
And I, I, and it's per front foot, and I don't know that the charge has changed in many, many years, the per foot charge?
Primarily the same.
It would just be, just offline, it would be interesting to know what the original intent was and what it was, what is this supposed to be recovering? And is it kept pace? And, and I've just had some questions about that, so.
Yep, we can follow up with that.
And then finally, is there a deadline to spend the CARES Act funding?
No. So again, it dissects the eligibility versus the expenditure. So, you know, it could come in. But it's really based on if you have enough eligible expenses, and those expenses have to have occurred in 2020. So again, it's not, once they're received, that's the key piece, is whether we had eligible expenses first, not what we, there, there's kind of a dissection against where it's spent versus how it's received in the eligible expenses. Most of those eligible expenses would be things that are within our budget already that are qualified for reimbursement.
So we would essentially receive a check, and we could deposit into an account and decide what to do with it? And then we really think it could be at the level that you could pay off bonds, millions of dollars? Because there was a lot of question about what was eligible, so.
Yep.
And I didn't hear, did you state a number yet? Or were you?
I would, I would perceive that we would take the full allocation for the city of Sioux Falls.
Whatever that may be.
41 million.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next presentation, and that is B, HR overview by Director Bill O'Toole, Director of Human Resources. And I would add, he also has the next one coming, which is C, the HR budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. Bill O'Toole, Human Resources Department. I need to thank a couple of people as well. This doesn't happen all by itself. I'd like to thank Amber Gibson from the finance, provides tremendous support for us. And Angie Youthy, the Compensation and Benefits Manager in my office, does a lot of work to get me prepared and this presentation prepared. So I very much appreciate their work and the opportunity to talk kind of globally about the personnel budgets, personnel services, take a large look at that, and then also follow up at the end with the human resources budget. And again, this will look similar to presentations in the, in the past, but we'll, we'll take a look at the, kind of the functional allocation of how we have our full-time personnel spread across the spectrum of local government, take a look at our employees per 10,000 population, some employment statistics about average applications, our turnover rates, things of that nature. And then again, talk globally about what are the costs associated with the personnel services at the city of Sioux Falls with the entire budget. We'll drill it down a little bit and talk about the breakdown of those costs into the general fund. And in years past, there were some requests to include some discussion about part-time staff. That's an important component for the city as well. And we'll talk about the 2021 recommended new positions, which you're already familiar with, and I've got a handout for you as well. And we'll wrap up with the HR budget. So first and foremost, this is just a pie chart showing you and illustrating how in 2020, all of our 1,280 full-time employees are spread across the city of Sioux Falls. And you can see when you look at this, I always like to say this also kind of helps reflect some of the priorities of mayors and councils over the years. These have been pretty close to the same. And 41% of all of our city employees are in public safety and either police or fire. The enterprise fund is 16% or 208. And I'm sorry if I didn't say it, in public safety, it's 522. And again, the enterprise fund is your water, water wreck, landfill, lights, fleet, and parking. Again, 208. And culture and recreation, which includes library and Parks and Recreation, is 140. General Government, which includes the mayor, the attorneys, council, finance department, facilities, management, IT, communications, GIS, and HR is 163. Highways and Streets is 108 employees. And that includes engineering, streets, public works, administration. At health, at 83 or 7%. And urban development, which includes your planning, building, and housing at 56 or 4%. So again, just kind of really broad look of how employees are spread across. This next chart, I think, tells a pretty interesting story. Over a long period of time, from 1990 to 2021, the orange bars represent the city's population from 1990 to 2021 estimated population. And we went from 108,36 all the way to 194,565. You do the math on that, that's a 93% increase in population, or over 93,700 folks. Just to put that in perspective, the city of Rapid City's population is about just a touch over 77,000. So we've grown population 93%. The, the blue bar line you see there represents the number of city employees, full-time city employees, per 10,000 population. You can see we've moved it from 1990, having 83, to 2020 and 2021, down to 66 or about 67 estimated in 2021. And again, if you just did the math, that's an average increase of about 15 full-time city employees over that duration. So how does that stack up with respect to maybe some of our other peers? And again, I've shared this one years past, this didn't move from, from prior years. And again, this is the 2020 number at 66. Obviously, you can see Sioux Falls in the blue. And we've done fairly well in terms of the employee per 10,000 population. Again, we don't get into comparing services. It's just a number and just something I'm just sharing. There again, the other piece of information I'd like to share is kind of the front door and back door, if you will. How are we doing on the front side in terms of attracting applications for our positions when they're vacant? We've got five years with the data here, and the green bar just shows you the number of, of applications for our positions, and then the number of vacancies. And you can see that the, we haven't fluctuated a great deal over this five-year period. We're averaging anywhere from 32 to 38 applications for each vacancy that we have. We think that's fairly competitive, particularly in a fairly low unemployment environment. And in 2019, it was running about 3.4%. And over that time period, it was 3 to 3.4. So it didn't fluctuate a great deal. The other thing that, that we'd like to share is kind of on the other side. What is, what does the turnover rate look like? And that's what the dark bar is showing you, the total turnover. If that's your true number, if you will, of the folks that are separating your employment. And again, if you look at a five-year period, you can see the trend there. And we've also added the blue bar, which shows you what would the turnover be if you pulled out the retirement piece from that. So you kind of get a sense of the, of the difference there. And I would tell you, in 2013, 2014, mostly, if you were not here, we made some pension changes, and a lot of people held back retirement. So that's why you saw kind of a spike in 2014. And, and what I would tell you is, these numbers, I'm very comfortable with these numbers. If, if you're seeing a regular kind of bar above that 10% level, you probably maybe get a little more nervous about something like that. But we think these numbers are fairly good for the city of Sioux Falls. Again, now, if, if we take a look at the entire budget of $593.6 million, you can see, again, taking that broad look, 26% or 151.6 million is personnel-related. And the remaining budget would be $442 million. If we keep drilling that down into the general fund, that's where the vast majority of our employees are paid from. And just to give you some perspective, about 86% or 1,123 of our employees are out of the general fund, and 181 are out of the enterprise fund. And if you drill this down and look at it in the general fund, out of 185.6 million, that 124.9 million represents the personnel costs, and 60.7 million in the remaining budget. It's a $5.4 million increase to the general fund for wages and benefits over the prior year. And obviously, as you know, the new positions account for about 1.8 million of that, and wages and benefits about another 3.6 million to equate to that $5.4 million increase. And here again, kind of drilling this down even further to say, inside the total personnel services, 124.9, how does that break down? 72% or 89.4 million is in wages and salaries. 15.5 million is in health, dental, and life insurance, 14.8 million in pension, 5.2 million in OASI and workers' compensation. And if you did a kind of a breakdown of wages and benefits there, that split comes up to be about 71% in wages and 29% in benefits. And I just wanted to throw in here, again, for some of you who've been here for a while, you know, we closed down our pension system back in 2013 in July. And just to give you a sense of how many folks have transitioned during that time period, we now have 57% or 698 in our city pension plan, and have already 535 or 43% at the state retirement system. And again, just to take a peek of the expenditures of the personnel services, over time, how much fluctuation is there? There is really not been a lot of fluctuation. I wouldn't expect there to be. The number of employees are growing commensurate with the growth of the city of Sioux Falls, and that's really what this is telling you. And another, obviously, important component for the city is our part-time staff. Obviously, we rely on a great deal of those folks, particularly in our Parks and Recreation Department. So what we have done is shown for you that in terms of part-time equivalents, we've got about another 248 bodies, if you, not bodies, but part-time equivalents in that part-time category. That makes up about 8% of the part-time wages for these folks. And you can see that obviously our biggest user is Parks and Recreation. They've got about another 147.3 folks utilizing, in full-time, utilizing the combination of those part-time bodies for that purpose. I won't go through each one of these, but it's just nice to be able to share that information because they are obviously vitally important for us to, to meet the services in our Parks and Recreation and other areas as well. Again, nothing new. The mayor made this presentation when he presented the budget. The new positions going forward are what's recommended in this budget is 24 positions, 15 firefighters, five police officers, a fleet mechanic, one water operator, and two sewer collection technicians. The cost for the 24 new positions is just over $2 million, $2,070,971. In terms of the breakdown between that impact of those dollars to the general fund, that's about 1.771 million to the general fund and about just under $300,000 to the enterprise fund. And again, obviously, everybody here is familiar that, obviously, the 15 firefighters coincide with opening Station 12. And real quickly, a little bit different format this year, just spend just a few moments talking about the actual HR budget for the city of Sioux Falls. First, would like to just identify that the Human Resources Department, we're, we're structured in kind of three broad areas. We've got a Compensation and Benefits Division that's headed up by Angie Youthy. We've got our employment team, it's set up by Jane Hannisted. They both have five individuals in, on their team. And the Labor Relations Risk Management Safety Division, which is Reed Holson. So we've got five, five, and five, plus the Director of Human Resources, meeting the human resources needs for all of the departments for the city of Sioux Falls. No new FTEs, obviously, in, in the human resources side. Our overall budget is 1.8 million. It's up 4.9% or 82,213. Again, I won't read through these. You can, you can see those. There is not, again, a lot of, or new information to relay about this, a pretty modest change, 4.9% overall. I think I would rather spend any time answering your questions that you might have about our budget than reviewing the items that are already highlighted for the budget. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions about the HR budget or anything on the overview of the Personnel Services.
Thank you. Questions? We'll start with Counselor Sale.
Thank you for your presentation. Just a few questions. You did talk a little bit about travel, and I don't know whether this is your department. How much travel expenditures were budgeted for 2020 that city employees will not be taking because of the lockdown? And do you have an approximate number of?
Counselor, I would not. I would defer to my colleague, Sean Pritchard, or somebody in the finance team, if they would, I don't know if they would have that. It might be something we might need to follow up.
That would be great.
You're right. We did kind of shut that down as that pandemic came through. It, it came basically to a halt, so.
Yeah. It's pretty much still at a halt for a lot of places. My second question, you talked about the part-time positions, the 248. How many of those positions went unfilled in 2000, so far in 2020?
We, we did, we did hold back a lot in that area, as you know. One of the things that we, we did as an organization as, as that was occurring, I mean, there was a number of things going on in terms of federal legislation. We were reallocating positions, folks out of the library team going over to the Parks and Rec to do some of the operation kind of work. So we did pull back. I don't have an exact number to say, here's who we didn't hire. Obviously, if we felt there was a critical need or a critical service that needed to be, to be met, we served it. But there was, there was, there was a hold on a lot of that activity. I just don't have a number. But if you wouldn't mind, we could.
Well, I think I'll probably follow up with Director Pritchard on that also. Maybe we can get a department, because I know the Parks Department really held back on their part-time employees. And that'd just be something good to know for us. So I'll follow up with Sean on that. My last thing is an observation. On page 46 of your presentation, you talked about the average number of city employees per 10,000 population. You know, I was a city employee back in the 90s, and it looks to me like we worked a lot harder way back then than they're doing today. So thank you for your presentation.
I'm going to resist comment on that one, Counselor, but thank you.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think one of my questions is on that very slide, that number per 10,000, is that, are we good at that number? Are you happy with it? I mean, when you look at it, the cities on the next page, and you see some are, what, 110, 113? I mean. I mean.
Yeah, and you know, it's an interesting thing, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you I know every answer to all of that. I know one of the things that we've talked about in years past, that I think that with the advent of technology, we've gotten more efficient. And of course, we all, we scrutinize very carefully adding a full-time position to the payroll, because that's, those costs are expensive. Obviously, our staff are our most important investment, they're providing the programs and services, but we don't take that lightly, and I think something like this does help show that. Now, I would also say, you could almost do another recalculation, and what I don't know is if in this calculation, the other cities have any of their full-time equivalents for the part-time in there. I don't think they do, I think this is just an apples-to-apples comparison. Yeah, so it's just their full-time staff. But I would say, I, again, we're very careful with adding new employees to the budget, but where we need to, we do. And again, I think that downward trend that you see there, it's really kind of flattened out, you know, about that 2010 to 2015 mark. And again, I think that's probably, I don't think we'll see that shift a great deal over time going forward, but that's some of my general response in that.
Right, so you're comfortable that it's not like we're short, or?
No.
Okay. Unemployment, or employment statistics, as far as turnover, I think you said, anytime you keep it under 10, did you say? That's, we're generally pretty happy. I mean, like, the breakdown here, I think it's five, and then eight with those who are retiring.
Yeah, as you're looking at 2010 to 2019, you look at these bars, recognizing, when I know what the history was in 2014, 2015, those retirements, it, of course, you don't want to see a lot of turnover, because it is expensive to have your staff turnover, but it doesn't cause me a lot of pain or discomfort to see that. I mean, where it would cause you pain or discomfort is if you thought of, let's take 2019, for example, that if you lost 8.4%, and all of those folks were your top performers, well, that wouldn't feel good no matter what, okay? What you're hoping is that some of your turnover is natural, progressive, and that you're replacing some of those folks with higher performers, engaged employees, and that there is a certain degree of healthy turnover, where, like I said, where I would get discomfort with seeing any sort of regularity north of 10.
Is like that 5 and 8%?
That's my personal opinion.
The 5 and 8%, like, these kind of ranges, like, some other companies in town and competition for employees and that, do they see similar turnover numbers? I mean, do you see feedback from that?
Yeah, I think you'd see it higher than, depending on what sector you're in, and I don't have the statistics in front of me, it can vary immensely. I mean, if, like, you're in the retail or food services, those numbers are really, really high.
Right.
And when we share these numbers with other employers, they're envious of these kinds of numbers. But I've also seen lower numbers, where you talk about federal government positions, they enjoy even lower rates than these. So, but I don't have that in front of me, but just to put some perspective to that.
Right, interesting, thank you.
Counselor Erickson.
Couple of questions, if I could. What's our internal unemployment, just for the city of Sioux Falls? I mean, obviously, we know what it is for the city and the state, but how are we for vacant positions? And I know that we are at a freezing, hiring freeze for some time, but is that been manageable as well? Because I can see that taking a toll on HR as well, if you're constantly, I mean, it's job security, but it's still.
Yeah, and what's happened is, as we're starting to kind of move back to the new normal, if you will, we have kind of opened the door a little bit to start replenishing some of those positions that may have been vacant over that period of time, and actually the employment team is pretty busy right now filling those vacancies. I think we had upwards of about 10 positions posted not that long ago, I'm not sure where it is today. And we're moving our employee, some of our employee base was working from home, that's also transitioning back here by middle of this month, may want to say the 21st or 23rd right in there. We're going to get those folks back. And like I said, if there's a vacancy in a position due to turnover, we are now filling those positions. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah, thank you. And then I have one other question, and I'm not quite sure if this falls under, just looking at this chart and some of the questions that Counselor Selberg asked, you know, one of the positions that was added last year was quite, not a slam dunk, I'll say, it was a little bit controversial with the Chief Cultural Officer. And so as we move forward, I would be curious on if our retention efforts, because we've added that position, are now at 2.5%? Or what, what do we, as the administration, feel like that's success? You know, how is that measured for success, other than, you know, pushing morale surveys and doing some of the other things that are being done throughout the city? We just, I think it's been crickets that we haven't really heard anything about that position, and like I said, it came with some heavy scrutiny, that I think it would be good to have some more information about, how is that position successful? Obviously, we as a council aren't going to remove a position or anything like that, but it was just a really just change of thinking for all of us, that some more information, and maybe we reach out to the mayor, but when it comes to employees, you know, I just, I would like more information and shared with the whole council, because we just haven't heard anything.
Understand completely, and I'll just remark broadly about that, that that's one of those positions that I think you start to see the value of that, not in the short term.
Right.
More of the longer term, when you're talking about culture, employee engagement, employee satisfaction, retention, all those kinds of things, I think that will play out over the long haul, but I understand what you're saying, Counselor.
Just some follow-up would be good with that, just to see how the numbers are impacted.
Of the return as associated with that effort.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Director O'Toole. I wasn't thinking about it until you just mentioned the transitioning back. I mean, our city is still under a state of emergency, as declared by the mayor. How many, are we looking into the future of how many people really have to come back? And how many need to transition? Or are we looking at, you know, just in the general course of things, that we do have more people that are telecommuting or working from home as part of that? I mean, is, what is the overall philosophy of, you know, if someone can do their job from home, are we encouraging them to do that? Or are we encouraging them to actually be back physically, and how do we manage that?
And I would say, I mean, there's not a large number of folks that are remaining there, and I would say that the expectation is more of a return, and that one of the things that we've learned is, we have learned that this can be an effective way to do some things. But I think as a, as a general rule, that when you think about the provision of government services and programs, that that's normally something done in a physical location, not from home. There are some positions where that makes some sense, but this was obviously a very unique situation in terms of the pandemic, and we figured out how to be effective. And I would share with the council, and be careful, and I don't think many of you have heard, that our approach, that there was any significant lapse in services during the pandemic, despite some of the shutdown and transition, how we handled some of that. And we are following kind of a gradual or a phased approach at getting our employees back to work. May at some point, this is kind of the new normal to some extent, and we obviously are mindful of the physical environment for our employees, how they're coming back to work, what does that look like? It's going to be a little bit different. And what are the existing policies and procedures that we, we still have in place to help protect them and their, and their safety and security, if you will, as it relates to that? But the idea is, for the most part, most of them will come back, and I think you'll see, you might see some stay if there's some sort of accommodation or some unique circumstance, so it'll be an exception, not the rule.
Is there, is there a date or a goal for a timeframe where we want everyone, we're shooting for everyone being back to where they are, or is it just kind of a department-by-department?
No, we are targeting, I'm trying to remember, the 21st, whatever that following Monday would be, maybe the 23rd or the 24th, that's kind of the bogey, if you will.
Of August.
Yes, that that would be the point, barring any unique circumstance, accommodation or kind of thing, that that's, that's the target, that's what everybody's shooting for.
Okay. I want to switch gears for just a second. When we look at our budget, a large part of our budget is based on human resources and our employees. Our labor cost is a big, probably the largest section of our budget. Where are we at negotiating with our three public services units? I know the mayor was shooting for a deal with the PD by the end of March, obviously, that March timeframe got thrown in the works, but kind of give us an idea where we're at, because a large part of what we have to approve is what's going to be negotiated into salary increases or decreases, I guess, depending on how you look at it.
I'll answer it this way, we are, we are no longer actively engaged in borrowing with any of the unions. There are still some administrative things that need to be done on their end, but we have every expectation that will be in front of this body, prior to the adoption of the budget, with a resolution for all three labor contracts. I'll kind of stop there, I'm hoping that answers your question.
It answers my question, because I don't want to jinx the process either, that, that part of it, but it would be nice to be able to say there are agreements in place prior to adopting our budget for the year, because it's kind of hard to get a handle on all of that when we're hanging out, trying to do that, but.
I stood completely, and I would envision perhaps an executive session to talk about labor contract items prior to that date, so that we can share a lot more of the specifics as it relates to that. But I would also put forward, I'm very happy and pleased with where we are in terms of all three of those respective agreements.
Awesome, thank you. And I've got one more that kind of goes in a little different direction. One of the things that I've been looking at is the executive compensation, the directors' pay and through that. The thing that stands out in that to me is the mayor's compensation. Is that something your department's really looked at? Because when you're managing directors who are in, I use with the public, kind of that 60,000 range is kind of an average of where our directors are being paid. Obviously, Public Works is considerably higher, there are some that are lower in their tenure with the city. But does, does the mayor's compensation stand out to you, being considerably low in comparison to the rest of the executive team? I know, that's as political as I can get today. Well, no, it's not, but I'm holding it back.
Well, and here's, here's how I would respond to that, is that the mayor's compensation was set in city charter back when it was adopted, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that this is the right number, I think it was set at $75,000 at the time the charter was adopted. And it is, it increases with inflation based on CPI that we apply in June of each year, and it has lifted that way ever since. So it would take a charter amendment to address that issue. If you want my opinion, I think that would be a fair thing to look at, Counselor, but that's also, that's, that would require a charter amendment, it would be up to the voters to take a look at that.
Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, just a quick question, Director O'Toole. How are we managing the key employees and the training of their replacements? And if it's a department-by-department management of that key person training, how do you track that for the city and the HR department?
One of the things that we just adopted, I think it might have been in last year's budget, is a learning management system, where we now have the ability to track that on a, on a, on a better basis than in years past. And that is also something that the Chief Culture Officer is now vested with in looking at that, and we're being much more intentional about how that's done. In fact, we're, we're working on a number of different things related to leadership development, succession planning, targeted training, those kinds of things. So that's been evolving, there's been a lot of individual departmental responsibilities. It wasn't as centralized as much as you might think in years past, but that is something we're being much more intentional about moving forward.
Questions from the phone? I have a couple of questions. Risk management, did that move under HR recently, and what was kind of the thought process?
It did, it was, it was in the city attorney's office, and it transferred to our office. One of the things that we were excited about is, again, it's kind of coming full circle again, and many years ago, when I, when I first started with the city, risk management was in HR. So what we're able to do is take those positions, and what we did is combined it, so the risk management, safety, workers' compensation was all kind of under one umbrella. So the risk manager and the risk specialist at the time transferred to HR, is now in HR, and that group is kind of back together again, so we're getting synergies in all those respective areas. And one of the things that we've been trying to get our feet underneath us, and I would share with this council, I still have a lot to learn in this area as well, but we're getting kind of the administrative pieces in place. Now we're targeting the personnel, we made a slight change in how the risk specialists function, and we're pursuing the risk manager. In fact, that posting closes at the end of today, and we're hoping to find a position that can lead that organization and take a much more enterprise-wide philosophy and approach to risk in the city of Sioux Falls. Not that it was being done incorrectly before, but we have some new ideas of how we want it to go, and this is going to be a key hire for us moving forward. But we thought that was a real win for us, and it's, seeing they get the collective effort of multiple people in broader areas looking at our safety and risk issues in HR. So more to come on that in the future, but thanks for asking.
Okay, very good. I don't know that the charts, it doesn't seem to bear it out, but have you seen any evidence that since they, you adopted the South Dakota Retirement System, that new hires are under that, that there's people that have, that there would be more turnover? Because somebody might be more free to, let's say, jump to. Police Department, whereas they may have stayed if they felt like they couldn't leave because of the pension?
We really haven't seen that, and frankly, I, we always hope that when we did this, what the reverse might happen, is that it might make it even more attractive for some of those that were with the state to come to the city now that we were in the state retirement system. I'm going to be careful about how I mention state workers versus city workers, but we think we're more attractive, if I may say it that way, but I don't think there's been any sort of trend of losing people because now that that system is in place.
Okay. And I would just note that the Charter Revision Commission has had some discussions about the mayor's compensation, and I think that can, that's a good discussion, and it's probably ongoing, and they may tackle it the next time around, so.
Yeah, and I know I did have, I engaged with them a little bit, and again, I think it is a worthy consideration, it might have some emotions around it, but I do think it's a worthy endeavor to take a look at it. I mean, I think once you figure out what are the criteria that you want to apply and how you do that analysis, that can make that a little more straightforward process.
Yeah, and of course, as you know, there's other implications as well, for example, the council's pay is pegged at 1.6, so if you change the mayor's without changing anything else, the council increases, is that something that people want to do? There's a lot of discussion about the intent of the charter, and we'll leave that for another day, but they're tackling that. The, I would mention working from home, and this is somebody, I'm somebody who's worked from home for 15 years now, which seems incredible, that I've worked at an office for five years at my current company, now it's 15 years. It does work well in some ways, but there are some intangibles, and there are some things you lose. There are some personal connections that you just can't replicate, I don't care how many, you know, I have video conferencing and phone, there is a benefit for just the culture and for the camaraderie and the connection to have people physically present, and there is a loss to that, and there are many companies that kind of did a lot of that, of the telecommuting, and then they pulled back a lot of it, and it was for those reasons.
I would agree with you 100%, that, I mean, of the articles that I read, that seems to be more of a shift, is moving away from that arrangement for those very reasons that you just talked about. And frankly, there, I don't think there's anybody that would convince me personally otherwise that you can't measure some of those intangibles, where you're connected, you know what's going on with your peers, your work, your environment, that, that, to me is, that's very valuable. And I personally like this idea of giving us back to that for many reasons, and I also believe, again, in local government and in government in general, again, working from home is the exception, not the norm.
And then finally, PCON, we implemented PCON, is that under your department, or does that land under the mayor with the Chief Culture Officer?
That is, the employee engagement, again, that was one of the philosophical issues that the mayor wanted to provide a great deal of emphasis on in measuring that, that is, that is, budgetarily, it's under HR, but is being managed by the Chief Culture Officer.
So questions about, how many departments have had the PCON survey and what the benefit that should go towards the mayor's office then? Or can you speak to that?
Could you just ask her?
Well, the PCON, you know, they were doing various departments, I guess I'm curious if they've gotten through all the departments.
Yes, all departments are completely active, and in terms of the surveys, they're going to the full-time employees, not the part-time employees, and we've got, we have, we have data, in fact, we just met this morning, revering our, my specific department's PCON data results in relation to the overall city data results. We're obviously in, working in tandem with the Chief Culture Officer, we have a lot of the same interests and issues, we're supporting that effort as well. And it's been, it's been a good, that's also one of those things, that that just doesn't happen overnight, but the fact you are measuring, identifying, and paying attention to those key drivers that involve. that involve, that can make a difference in employee engagement and rise those levels, I think is a really good thing for us. And we're still learning along the way and enhancing different features of that platform. That's really a robust system. But yeah, that is the responsibility of the Chief Culture Officer.
But you've seen results in terms of, have you seen things that have been identified or things have bubbled up or something that came up that maybe you weren't even aware of that was an issue that you could address?
And again, when you give employees the complete anonymity and confidentiality, they're willing to share. And they've given us the good, the bad, and the ugly, and that's been good. It's difficult to read, I'm going to tell you, but it's good information to have, and you'd rather know than not know. And even in my department of 16 employees, we've learned some things, and you've been able to make some incremental changes that you otherwise you might not have learned. And again, that's the small stuff, but there's still a lot more to come with respect to that information, how we're using it, how we're implementing it throughout the city. And you'll hear more. I think you'll hear more about it.
Okay, great. And then I guess the last thing I would share is, I would echo, it would be good if you could share, or I guess the mayor's office, we can reach out to them, about what is the Chief Culture Officer is doing. And I think that really comes down to the fact that as city councilors, we're just, we're part-time. We're not, you know, we're not on insight every day, because I'll go in there sometimes and throw our videos up. And I know that there's things that are going on with full-time staff, but that wouldn't reach councilors. So there's probably a lot going on, but we're just not aware of it. So it's not on our radar.
I think that's fair, Counselor. There is a lot going on. And I know that individual very well, she came from our office, is incredibly busy. I'm working with her on some projects as well. And, but I hear you would like more information as it relates to that new position in last year's budget.
And we'll reach out to the mayor's office since that's a direct report to the mayor. So, very good. Thank you very much. We will continue with the next item unless I hear a strong consensus that you want a five-minute break, or would you like to just continue on? Looks like we're all good. So we're going to go on to Item D, IT Communications, presented by the Director of Innovation and Technology, Mike Grigsby. Welcome to the chambers and welcome to the city employee. It's been a few months, but good to have you.
Good afternoon. I appreciate it. Again, Mike Grigsby, Director of Innovation and Technology. I joined the city in April this year and became part of not only an incredible leadership team, but also joined a cast of amazing men and women in the Innovation and Technology Department. I'd also like to express my gratitude to the Finance Department for my boot camp training in the budget process this year. I have worked for city government before, but each one is different. Due to my limited tenure within the city and the relatively few major budget impacts for my department, I'll use the time to provide an overview of the department and discuss those few budgeted changes. The Innovation and Technology Department is comprised of Information Technology, Civic Analytics, formerly GIS, Communications, Digital Services, and the Office of Innovation. The majority of my time over the past several months has been spent getting acquainted with the staff, understanding our projects and needs, assessing the resources we have, and beginning to line out a game plan for achieving the city's vision. While I've not had full visibility into the department's operations and activities over the past year, many of, and many of their activities were overseen by my predecessor. There are two notable achievements that I would like to mention within the Information Technology and Civic Analytics. I want to mention them because I believe they're not only indicative of the caliber of talent that we have, but also the thought within the department, and also point ahead toward future innovation, flexibility, and resilience required across the department and throughout the organization. One of the greatest challenges this year, as been mentioned already, is the impact of COVID-19 virus and what it has done on city personnel, logistics, and resources. The department has responded quickly to the organization's need for remote capabilities. Within a few short weeks, the Information Technology Team and others rolled out mobile computing and collaboration solutions that allowed the organization to scarcely skip a beat. One of the key solutions to sustaining a remote workforce was the implementation of the Cisco Webex Collaboration Platform. This software solution facilitated countless hours of virtual meetings, as well as helped drive better, more efficient messaging between teams, something that had been done previously by email, but without the same effectiveness. I've often said that information technology functions as the central nervous system of an organization, creating the network of channels through which information and data travels. And if IT is the central nervous system, then Civic Analytics is the central processing unit. Like the Information Technology Division, the GIS team rapidly responded to the city's needs and the broader community by delivering high-integrity data to fuel dashboards, to simplify understanding through visualization, and to the raw materials required for informed decision-making. Prior to the COVID-19 crisis, the GIS team was already beginning to retool and expand their mission to align with the greater role that they are taking in data analysis, beyond geographic information systems and mapping. For this reason, we have begun the process of renaming the division Civic Analytics in order to reflect the broader role that they play. Some of the major budget impacts within IT and Civic Analytics are the 128,000 decrease of supplies and materials from this budget. These have been moved into Revolving Technology Fund. The Technology Fund is a better way of managing the expenses related to the overall lifespan and total cost of ownership of certain enterprise systems and platforms. One other budget impact I'd like to comment on is the $117,800 increase in professional services to address infrastructure and security needs. As government organizations continue to be the targets of bad actors, ensuring that the city is prepared to address malicious incidents is a growing necessity and sadly has become a matter of when and not if. We do not have the resources to maintain the necessary in-house staffing and skillsets needed to protect the city at the level we desire. Therefore, we must look externally through professional services in order to augment our current security team. If IT is the central nervous system, Civic Analytics is the CPU, then communication is the eyes and ears of the organization, as well as the mouth. Communications is as much about pulling in information as it is pushing out information. Like their coworkers in IT and Civic Analytics, team members from the communications were called upon to help the city respond to the dramatic effects of COVID-19 and the pressures it placed on the community. Communications helped prepare and deliver numerous public service messages and helped develop and quickly distribute numerous training and informational messages internally to all city employees. The dynamics of a remote workforce required innovative and creative ways for keeping the entire organization in sync and up to date, and they successfully handled the challenge. The Communications Division provides services in the primary areas of print, web, and video. City Link records and broadcasts over 120 meetings annually, proposed and implemented to, excuse me. In late fall of last year, a new concept was proposed and implemented to centralize the communications, marketing, and engagement efforts of respective departments collectively within Communications Division. The Communications and Marketing Coordinators, CMCs, now benefit from a pool of shared resources and close proximity to the organization's creative services. The CMCs aid the departments in pushing/pulling information to and from the community stakeholders and citizens through effective storytelling across numerous media platforms. As with IT Civic Analytics, there are not many major budget impacts for 2021. Of significant note is the $219,343 increase in full-time wages and benefits. This change does not represent an overall increase in FTEs, rather the reallocation of positions from other departments into Communications Division. Additionally, the $85,761 decrease in professional services and supplies and materials represents the transfer of these expenditures to the Revolving Technology Fund. In closing, I am excited and honored to be a part of this great team and a member of this extraordinary city. In my previous roles, I have worked with dozens of cities across North America who are not as strongly positioned as Sioux Falls, and I feel both privileged and obligated to take advantage of the opportunities in front of us to not only have tremendous impact on our own community, but to be a shining example for other cities to follow. We still have a lot of work to do. Technology creates more opportunities and capabilities each year, but gets more complex as well. Maintaining a competitive and skilled talent pool will require much effort. As the city continues to grow, the need for more innovative ways of addressing a wide array of challenges from economic vitality to safety and security to digital equity and inclusion will become a constant component in all of our endeavors. Using data for more informed decision-making and creating engaging communication platforms will all be required to achieve the vision in front of us. The Innovation and Technology Department will continue to grow and evolve in order to help the city meet increasing demands being placed on it. I appreciate the opportunity to share this small portion of what this amazing team does, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Director, questions? Questions on the phone? Counselor Erickson?
I'm not going to let you off that easy, but I'll be brief. Thanks for your presentation. I had the opportunity the other day to sit down with you and another counselor and just talk really about your vision. And I know you came into this, and then COVID hit, and it kind of all came to a screeching halt as far as like getting to know you and your vision for the department. And, you know, just to say I'm impressed would be, I mean, really downplaying it just because of your global reach of what you have and can do and your experience. I think we're really fortunate to have you back in Sioux Falls. And so I'm excited to see how much more technology can make government more efficient, because let's be honest, generally, government is not where you see a lot of efficiencies. But we see that more and more over the last few years of really just trying to have a renewed process. And there's a lot of things that we can continue to do amongst other departments as far as notifications and stuff. So I'm excited to continue those conversations with you as well and see really how technology can just really streamline things and making it consistent across the board. So thanks for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Grigsby, I think something that Director Pritchett talked about earlier, the Centralized Facility Fund, I think that if you could use your global reach and kind of bring into account our overall building infrastructure from deferred maintenance to really good to really great, kind of like the street cred program has. I think if we can put something together and use that in your data dashboards, like your team has been working on, because like you said, infrastructure and integrity as a part of the overall IT department, I think that also has something to do with our building infrastructures as well. So I don't know if there's, you know, correlating factors that you can help with Director Pritchett, but I think there could be something really innovative in there. So just a comment and kind of a, maybe a behag.
Appreciate it.
Seeing no other questions, I did have an opportunity to sit down with Director Grigsby a few times and had some wonderful conversations, very impressed as well. I think the renaming of GIS to Civic Analytics makes a lot of sense because they're doing so much more than just geography, although I will say that, I have said this for years, they are one of those departments that you don't necessarily see a lot, but what they do is incredible, both for the council and for various departments. And so they do a great, great job. I don't know, I think we had this before you came on, but I do want to just make sure to lift up because this would be part of your department, the drone footage. So making sure to continue to use the drones because it's really added a lot of value add to a lot of the TV shows, for example, the flyovers of road projects and things like that. So whatever you can do with, you know, drones, that would be, that's great.
That is a big part of the communications team. The two individuals that we have, recently, we just onboarded one, and he just recently got his Federal Aviation Administration license to fly those. So we now have two licensed drone pilots. And because of the city and the work that we do and the charter that we have, we're able to provide drone footage and fly in locations that other recreational drone pilots are not able to. So it is a tremendous asset to the city, and to capture some of the footage that would have either put life in peril, you know, from some of those, or just we would not have ever been able to capture just because of the logistics of trying to manage that. So it is a tremendous asset. And we, again, we now have two piloted officials.
Great. And you touched on it. I'm sure it's much more than just what we see on the outside, which is TV footage. There's probably a lot of great things that can be done for departments that can assist either in public safety or just being able to do certain monitoring or taking a lot of different things. So that's great. GIS was on the second floor of City Hall. Are they still there?
They are. They are the only division that did not move over into city center, and that was a strategic move just to keep them in proximity with the organizations and the units that are using them primarily.
Okay, so they're there to be closer to the organizations they generally work with. I was wondering whether it would make sense if they should be closer to you on the third floor, but you're happy with their location?
I would love to have my whole team under one roof, but I understand the logistics behind it, so it's a, I'm amenable to it.
And then the Innovation Coordinator, there's a lot of stuff that goes on there, but we don't necessarily hear a lot about it. Is that, are the tasks that she's working on, and I don't know if she has, you know, team members underneath her, or if she's an army of one, but is that generally departments coming and asking for things, or is it in the other direction? How are her tasks and her day-to-day activities set?
She did have another team member under her. We lost, that individual recently left the organization to pursue other endeavors. The work that she is doing right now is, in, I would say, it's probably 60%, maybe a little higher, from her office to other departments, encourage them to look at things innovatively, to look at things creatively. Some of the challenges that we've had, innovation challenges have come out of her office. Some of the process changes have come out of her office. So she is not only looking internally, but she is making the connections with peers in, with her peers in other cities across the nation, and so helping to, her to navigate that has been very beneficial. There's a lot of work. It's a lot for one individual to do, but I am encouraged by her enthusiasm in getting it done.
And this is closely tied, but every time you go to a conference, everything, all the presentations revolve around smart cities. And so whatever we can do in that regard, because there's some incredible things that could be done, I mean, it's, you know, all kinds of things, like things that would sense the temperature of pavement to know where we should be icing. And, I mean, the opportunities are endless, so I would just, I'm sure you are, but encourage you and her to be looking at any of that and what we could look at investing or piloting, perhaps, so.
And we are. We're looking at those now, and looking at the end point of that is relatively easy. That gets a lot of the buzz. The infrastructure is what's necessary, and we're working on that right now to implement those tools and those platforms, so.
Great. And the last thing, I've talked to you about this, I would love to see, maybe it comes out of your department, is funding for Transit Consultant. We've talked about that, to take a good look at, and somebody who is an expert to come in and take a good look at it and give us some ideas. And also to, I know that COVID is really kind of throw the wrench in the plans, but to make sure that we lift the pilot off the ground and we learn what we can from it and figure out which direction we need to go from there, so.
There will be good insight gained from that pilot.
Great, okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next up is Item E, Entertainment Tax, presented by Director Pritchett. Welcome back.
Thank you. One of the benefits of having a little bit of a break here is, was able to get some of the information on some of your previous questions. So on the furniture assessment question, the annual maintenance for street servicing that is assessed to abutting properties, it was enacted in 1999, last revised in 2008, $1 per square foot. So that, hopefully.
It was revised to $1 in 2008?
Well, yes. It says it was last revised in 2008. It didn't specifically state from what to what.
Okay, but 1999?
Yeah, $1, yes.
Okay.
And then the other piece, this isn't addressed, the full question on the FTE hires or the holdbacks on that, but on the part-time side, I think right now we're projecting about a $1.7 million savings 2020 in the current year, fiscal year, based on deferring part-time hiring, primarily from Parks and Recreation. With that, I'm going to jump into the Entertainment Tax Fund. So a big part of what makes Sioux Falls a great place to live is the city's investments in a vibrant quality of life. Collection of the Entertainment Tax on lodging, accommodation, dining out, alcohol sales, and ticketed events has provided the city with a balanced approach to providing quality entertainment options for our residents and our visitors in the community. The current COVID environment, as we've talked about in many of our more recent monthly financial presentations, has probably had the most impact on the city within this fund. Obviously, our lodging tax has probably taken the most hit, but that doesn't directly impact the city as that's passed through funds. But as you can see in the 12-month rolling average, that smoothes out those monthly variations. We are seeing a, excuse me, jumped ahead here, a downward We are seeing a, excuse me, jumped ahead here, a down, a downward, trending, particularly in the last several months related to COVID. We continue to monitor, plan and adapt to this changing environment. As we've discussed, we've held upwards of $2.5 million to $3 million worth of projects, both in the capital and the repair maintenance side in, in preparation, or at least in response to some of the reductions that we've seen there in preparation for as much as 20% reductions in that entertainment tax, which is what we were originally projecting. And that's what we're including as part of our projections for the entertainment tax fund for 2020 is that we would see upwards of a 20% reduction on an annualized basis for this year. On a positive note, certainly we've seen some positive things happening, both on the entertainment side. At the Premier Center, we've seen some shows that have been starting to get scheduled. We hosted the PBR. And of course, we had the reopening of the Washington Pavilion. The council approved some of the additional with the pools not being open this year, kids being able to utilize the Washington Pavilion and the zoo for those from low-income families. And I think that has been real positive as well for our community. So those, those have been good things. We're seeing some improvements in the entertainment tax, especially 50% of that tax is generated from restaurants. So as that industry sector has improved, we're seeing some bounce back in that, but we certainly have a long way to go there because we do rely on, on bars as well as lodging, two areas particularly hard-hit in terms of funding that tax. As shown here, the list of facilities that are supported by the city's entertainment tax dollars. Of course, these are city-owned facilities that are managed by third-party organizations. The Events Center complex, which includes the Sioux Falls Stadium, are managed by ASM Global. The Washington Pavilion and Orpheum Theater are both managed by Washington Pavilion Management, Inc. And we continue to reap the benefits of having these great partnerships with these organizations. And I do stress that word partnerships because we are talking at, at least oftentimes weekly with both of these organizations from the finance department, just tracking how things are going. We've always had a close working relationship. I think that's probably gotten even closer here over the last several months as we've tried to, to stay in touch in regard to what's happening with the COVID pandemic. For the 2021 budget for the Events Complex in the Sioux Falls Stadium, they are both showing decreases. These decreases are driven in large part by the timing and completion of one-time purchases or repairs that were handled in 2021. In 2020, the city purchased, or excuse me, budgeted for some large convention center projects such as lighting system upgrades and a boiler replacement. Some of this, even while we've had the, the convention center not being utilized, it has proven to be a beneficial time to make some of these upgrades. It is our opportunity to invest pending, you know, we see growth coming back for the convention center in the future. So there's been a lot of improvements made to that facility, particularly this year. The Sioux Falls Stadium also had some larger one-time repairs that occurred this year. The, the biggest one being the netting project where we extended the safety for that facility out to the third baselines, first and third baselines. I think that was an important project just to maintain safety for that. And in a positive aspect, we've been able to host games there at this year. So that's been good for this community as well. For 2021, the city looks to invest about $800,000 in the convention center primarily. That relates to an entry vestibule rehabilitation as well as some back, back office employee locker and maintenance spaces. We also have large equipment investments in the Event Center video equipment for about $500,000 and some kitchen and custodial equipment as well. But overall, as you look at the various components of our entertainment venues, particularly when you look at the Washington Pavilion, the Events Center and the Convention Center, we've made significant progress in terms of repairs and maintenance, staying on top of those needs for those facilities, utilizing the Events Center or the entertainment tax as a directed resource for that has really been positive for that and allowed us to kind of react and adapt, particularly in these times of pandemic where we've had to, to react to some reductions to revenues within the entertainment tax. For the 2021 budget for the Washington Pavilion and Orpheum Theater, relatively flat for, as last year, there are no increases scheduled in terms of the operating support that we've provided. The primary decreases you see here are in capital and they're driven in large part by the timing and completion of one-time purchases and repairs in 2020. The city invested in the new Kirby Science Discovery Center exhibits. In June 2020, the Pavilion unveiled its final phase of its completed and renovated third floor for the Discovery Center. If you haven't had a chance, if you've got young kids or grandkids, I would encourage you to take an opportunity to go visit that because it really is a great amenity for the community in terms of farming and, and some of our agricultural background. The city also replaced and upgraded some much-needed boilers at the Orpheum Theater this year. In 2021, the city looks to invest in about $700,000 in capital investments for these facilities. This includes for the Washington Pavilion ticketing system, lighting and theatrical upgrades, new curtains for the Orpheum Theater stage. Looking forward, a large improvement currently being scoped and designed that we had previously discussed with the council is the cornice and parapet project for the Washington Pavilion. The city continues to assess the future roles of the Sioux Falls Arena and Baseball Stadium. And we're continuing to focus on making wise investments to maximize the entertainment and convention center value for minimizing the impact to our taxpayers. I think a year like this, especially when we've seen such a decrease in convention center traffic and the impact that's had for our lodging industry, as well as being able to host local tournaments for many sports here, you, you see what a dramatic impact that does have for our lodging and, and for the community in general, just from an economic perspective. The, the other thing I would say is in regard to the Washington Parapet Project, obviously that was a sing, a, a large investment that we had begun discussions on. We have not budgeted for that item as part of next year. We did budget as we did for this year in the initial design of it, but we have not included the investment in that in 2021. We have projected a, some of that investment in 2022, but we're going to have to continue to monitor the revenues that we receive in the entertainment tax fund to decide at the time that we can move forward with that project. And we'll have additional conversations when it comes to that. So that has not been included as part of the capital program for next year. With that, I'm going to pause, take any questions you have regarding the entertainment tax fund before we jump into the other finance budgets.
Questions? Counselor Erickson?
It's kind of related to this because it's entertainment tax, but we, we have this kind of philosophical debate on and off about zoo funding and entertainment tax. Can you just give me a little snidbit if we're using any entertainment tax for the zoo this year or not? Because some of us think we should, some of us don't think we should. So it's just kind of where it's allowed per ordinance, but.
Correct. And I don't know how many years back it dates that we began providing some operating support for the zoo. We have not provided capital support or for maintenance or improvements. So a large part of our support for the zoo, whether it's in repairs and maintenance, staffing or operational support, has run through the general fund. In terms of capital improvements, it's run through the sales and use tax funds. So those, those have predominantly, over historically been the, the primary source for that support for the zoo. Several years ago, and I don't know the exact year in my mind, they wanted to support, I think the council wanted to support an increase to the zoo. That wasn't, there wasn't enough sufficient funding within the general fund. And so at that time, the entertainment tax was amended and allowed for an opportunity for that increase to be funded out of the zoo. So of the, you know, I'm trying to think the total amount, it'll be part of the Parks and Rec budget, more than $1 million of operating support for the zoo. A little over $200,000 came from the entertainment tax.
Still to this day?
So as part of the 20, through 2020.
Yes.
But as part of the proposed budget, we are proposing to move that over to the general fund.
Okay.
Just for simplicity, it's where a majority of the support for the zoo comes from anyway and just removes it from the entertainment tax, especially in light of some of the pressures we're seeing on the revenue side for the entertainment tax.
Right. Yeah. And, and it was, within the last four years, we did that. I mean, again, it was in ordinance, but we were really just Robin Peter to pay Paul because of some stuff with the stadium and the zoo. And so it was just kind of a, a creative way that the council did it to ensure we had the funding. So. And it is allowed, but again, I do see the strain on it and hopefully the events can start coming back to the Premier Center. A lot of those have been rescheduled. I know if, if they were canceled, refunds were given back to people so that, that entertainment tax and sales tax would be refunded to the person as well because you didn't use your ticket. But if it was rescheduled, your tickets are sitting out there for a year and a half until it happens. It's just the way it works. So hopefully we'll be able to see some shows kicking in and being able to do some, some better things there. I don't think I have any other questions. Mine was just kind of zoo-related. So thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things, when you talked about some of the CARES Act money and how we use it as the future, I really believe that if we postpone the, the parapet and cornice replacement, and I don't care if we, from a, a policy standpoint, loan the money to the entertainment fund, but continuing to kick it down the road, I think we're dealing with some issues as it continues to deteriorate. And I understand in the pandemic, but we're in a much better position now than we thought we would be six months ago. And I think we'll continue to, to improve, but at the same time, I think that's got to be on that penciled-in list of things we're looking at how to, to invest the $41 million. And I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I go back and use the right, the difference between eligibility and expended. I'll get it by the time we're done with the process, but you know, it's not an eligible expense, but it's something we could expend those funds on. So.
I mean, we certainly have seen revenue reductions within the entertainment tax. So there's always opportunities to re-support some of the losses that occurred due to those revenue reductions. We were just very careful. The Revenue CARES Act does not support revenue reductions. But again, it comes down to the nuances of the eligible expense versus the utilization that the city ultimately chooses to move forward with.
But I think that's been one of the themes that we've talked about today is that ongoing maintenance and repairs to a city-owned facility that, that we just, we're going to have to bite the bullet at some time and we're, we're not quite there yet that we're willing to, to make that. And I think this is an opportunity of, of where that should come from or how to, to do that and to continue that process moving forward.
Other questions, including on the phone? Been pretty quiet remotely. Yeah. So bookings at the Convention Center, are, are things being booked out there or is it rather idle?
They're starting to pick up. It's mostly local things. You know, they've hosted a wedding show and they're doing a lot of, of more local type. You're still not seeing a lot of interest in travel or limitations on travel, which is making it prohibitive, but still planning to host the Governor's Hunt that will be coming up in October. There'll be a show associated with that. So that will be really helpful to help building that. The PBR, getting the Events Center back open, I think was a key piece. There's obviously the Toby Keith that's also scheduled for the, the Premier Center. So we're seeing some additional opportunities open up there, but it's been primarily local. Your convention center traffic where people are traveling for meetings just is non-existent right now for obvious reasons.
If things stayed relatively the same as it is now into 2021, would you defer some of these capital improvements at the various facilities or?
Yes. We're going to have to continue to adapt to that because we'll have to monitor, you know, it's really a, you know, it goes month to month as we're kind of seeing what's happening on a national level. But, you know, two months ago, we wouldn't have expected where we are now. You know, four months, well, we wouldn't have expected where we were then. And so it, it continues to shift and we're continuing to adapt with it. And we'll have to make some adjustments to some of those R and M. That's the, the nice thing about when you're focused a lot on R and M, you do have the opportunity to react to some of those things. The other positive thing is, especially in regard to, to many of those facilities, there isn't a lot of deferred maintenance. We've caught up on a lot of that and, and some of these are, are great improvements to make for the facilities, but they're not have to get done. So we do have the opportunity to pull back on some of those as needed.
Remind me regarding the, the parapet, we funded the design for that fully, I believe. Is that continuing?
The design, I'm trying to recall, did we actually move forward with the execution of the design or has that been held back? It's still in progress right now. So.
What, what is in progress mean?
Have they executed the design contract for it? I'm trying to recall. I think that's been held back a little bit pending kind of results of where we're at. I think it's something that we'll probably want to get moved forward with, at least in that respect. So we have a plan in place for when we're able to execute the parapet project.
So essentially the money's encumbered, but it hasn't, we haven't actually spent it. Okay. So it's not like we're working on a design or anything like that. We still have to even do the design.
Right. We need to move forward with the design, which would probably take most of the next year anyway to complete before we can move forward with it in 2022.
Would, would that money's authorization expire at, is that a capital piece and you'd have three years?
Part of the capital program, so it will not expire.
So you have a couple of years, three years to use it before you lose the authorization? Okay. So you have time to wait and take a look. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it would be a, it is a balance of, you know, because as we know, there's some life safety considerations there and, and so. I do have a question. Maybe this is for Mr. Smith who's over there. Right now, there's, one of the big pieces of the bread and butter at the Pavilion is Broadway shows. And obviously they're not touring. So how does that affect your budget? How, how are you doing in, in a global sense over at the Pavilion and, and do you project for the coming months?
Well, I'm trying to think how I should answer that. First of all, I may say welcome, Counselor Jensen. Great to have you here and congratulations. Well, look, I mean, the Broadway show is a big piece of what we do there. There's no question about that. So, you know, we haven't had a Broadway show since last spring. We've been working almost non-stop, rescheduling all kinds of shows. But the reality is these decisions are all driven largely by people on the East Coast, primarily in New York City. They've been hit harder than anywhere else. So I guess to some extent, it's understandable that their attitudes towards these things are a little different than they are here and in other places. It's also driven by the large markets. They won't come to Sioux Falls unless they can go to Minneapolis and Chicago and so forth. So again, you can see what's going on in larger cities and how they're handling things. So the short answer is it's a huge, it's a huge piece of what we do. So it's a huge hit on the revenue side. But, you know, every business is being impacted by this adversely. Well, almost all are being impacted adversely. We can't control revenue always. We can control our expenses and that's just the approach we take. It's the way we look at it. So we've made a lot of adjustments, including with staffing and other expenses, and we'll continue to do that. My best guess is there's probably a, well, we have some Broadway shows still scheduled this spring and so we're working to retain those, but it's, it's really not in our control, unfortunately.
And then there's other shows. You, you're selling a series. So there must be other shows. I don't know if the word would be off-Broadway or if they're regionals. I mean, are those continuing forward as far as you?
Yeah, there's some smaller stuff. So we do have, we have a concert in, we have a concert and a musical coming up here in, in this fall. So the smaller stuff is still out there. And, you know, I'm sure Mike would say this at the Premier Center, there's still a relatively small number that can, in the entertainment world, that can just take a year off and still be okay financially. You know, most people can't do that. And that's true of a lot of people in the entertainment world as well. So the smaller acts, they need to be out there playing and they will go look and they'll travel the country from one end to the other and not be on a coordinated tour. So those are the ones we'll look for. You know, some things that would normally be in the Orpheum will probably move over to the Pavilion and the, the Mary W. Somerville Hall because we can accomplish some, some spacing there. We've been surveying our patrons to find out how important is the social distancing, the spacing, the masks, all those things. So I think we have a pretty good idea of what the next several months will need to look like. And then like everybody else, we're just hoping for progress, you know, on the, on the virus front.
And do you know, so obviously there's going to be some demand for distancing. So there's going to be some, you know, every other seat or something, some model like that? Do you think that it's going to pencil out for promoters, for you? Because obviously if you're not filling, sometimes if it's half-full, it may not pay.
It won't pencil out for the biggest shows. It, it just won't, not for Broadway unless they really reduce the amounts that they're willing to go out and perform for. So again, that's got to work for them too with all of their overhead. Personally, I don't think it's going to work financially to be able to do true six feet in-between-bodies social distance. It's not going to work. But I think a combination of some spacing, I think the reality is there will be some shows that will require masks. You know, it's not unlike what we've been dealing with for years where some shows or entertainers have different policies on guns in the facilities, metal detectors for screening, those types of things. And it's just part of the contract. You either agree to it and they come, or you don't and they don't come. So it's a mixed bag. I think it's going to be like that over the next six to 12 months, quite honestly, with masks and even some distancing.
Two, two other things that are major parts of your organization would be the, the summer classes. How, how is that going in terms of?
The summer classes have actually been, I would say, really good considering. Not all that far off what they've been in past summers where we've been pretty full. Our preschool, which by the time school starts, our preschool is usually 100% full, pretty darn close. Some years will have a small waiting list. I think we're at maybe 80% this year as we get close. So that's not bad. year as we get close. So that's not bad. So maybe much like you're seeing on the community level with kids going back to school, there is an appetite for parents and a willingness to send their kids to the education programs. And there's only so much you can do there with distancing and disinfecting and all that. We're doing all of that. But at the end of the day, there's only so much you can do. There's an appetite for that. Our museums, our science center in particular, has probably been running between 50 and 65% this summer of where it was last summer. So again, a little better than we expected. At the same time, you don't know what to expect. But we've been pleased with that. So hopefully, that'll continue to grow. And again, by next summer, hopefully, we'll be a lot further ahead all the way around.
So and even with all things considered, you have, you had no request for an increase in operational funding from the city?
No. I think for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, the arrangement we have is that the city dollars primarily are directed towards facility-related expenses and not on the programming side. I think that's a decision the city made a long time ago. Personally, I, you know, and I was on the other side of the fence. I thought it was a good decision then. I still do. And I understand we're in a little unique position. We're part of the quality of life component and all that. But I just think we should be expected like like virtually every business around. We should be expected to make adjustments and tighten our belts. And, you know, we're in the same boat with everybody else. And we're a private management company at the end of the day. So, you know, we're going to make it work. And the success we've had in recent years, you know, I'm just very pleased that we were disciplined with those dollars that we did generate and those surpluses we had that virtually every penny went into our reserve fund. Because, boy, I tell you what, there's always debates, especially with nonprofit entities and even for profits, debates what to do with those surplus dollars. And in good times, and you're just really thankful in times like this. There, there's not a lot of debate anymore about making sure you have a robust reserve fund to get you through times like this. Because, you know, I mean, you're talking six and seven-figure losses over the course of of a year for us easily.
Yeah, it's great that you have that. It's great when the rainy day comes that you've got the umbrella. So finally, one new item that is in the budget here proposed is Leonardo Cafe renovations. Can you just tell us a little bit about about that and why you think that's valuable?
Yeah. And I was, and I think that is, I think that has been moved out maybe a year.
Shows 21.
Okay.
Oh, that's the design, yeah. Well, you know, what I would say in the facility, and
Leonardo's is a great example of this, you know, again, with all due respect to everyone involved on the front end of what has been, you know, a magnificent addition to downtown in the community, the reality is, the city, the community took a very old historic building, 350,000 square feet, and retrofitted it into making it what it is. And I don't think there's any question, if you somehow could start from scratch and build new, it would not look like it does. It just wouldn't. You just would not have things where they are. And I think one of our challenges with Leonardo's for several years has been a bit of the design in terms of where it's located. We can't do much about that. But even inside, it just doesn't flow like it should as far as the customer queuing, how you're ordering, where you're able to put food products. So this isn't going to be an extensive remodel when it's all said and done. But I think we're going to learn a lot through the design phase. And then there will be some dollars to redesign it in a way that I think will make the customers happier. Certainly, it should benefit us, you know, operationally. We should do better down there. So I I do think it's, it's important if we want Leonardo's to really serve the purpose that I think it was intended to 20 years ago.
And I will say, it's an incredible place for lunch. It's kind of a hidden gem. And what, what about a, we were talking about a sign at one point, getting a sign out on the street. Is that doable?
Well, sure. And, you know, we've, you know, I worked with Mike Cooper when I was newer over there. So Jeff Eckoff, now, there's, I mean, we're well within our, our rights as far as the signage ordinance and script footage and all that stuff. But again, it comes back to practically speaking, where would you put it? I mean, on the, if you put it over by Leonardo's, which is kind of tucked away and hidden on that southeastern corner, okay, well, you're on Main, you're on Main Avenue, which is a one-way, it's not necessarily a highly visible, high-traffic street at that point. So honestly, I would rather have us focus on doing a better job marketing. We have a great product. I mean, I think it is one of the best kept secrets in, in town, and we're trying to change that. But I just think we should focus on marketing. And then when they come down, have something that does flow well, it's designed well, and it works well. We've been upgrading our equipment. The city's been upgrading equipment in there in recent years. So, you know, I think a redesign will really help.
Yeah, well, I will tell you, the the chef there is great. And the layout is weird. So it would be nice to get a better. So thanks for the time. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Onto, I think, our final item, which I believe is finance, parking, and help me, we have one other one in there, facilities.
Facilities, yes.
Welcome back.
So the final, like you mentioned, the final pieces here we talk about is public parking facilities, and then just general finance. All of these fall under the Department of Finance. So public parking, we'll start with that one. As a fund, the public parking operates as an enterprise fund. So essentially, by policy, is meant to be self-supporting through user fees, users of the system, and supporting that. So as far as their 2021 budget, no significant change in course. The existing model allows us to adapt as it has. Certainly, there's been some significant impacts to public parking because of its impacts to downtown, office environments, and of course, the retail and hospitality environments there. We expect to see continued incremental build and additional customer demand, some positive things with the U.S. Post Office lease that occurred and came forward to the council here last week, I think is a good example of that. As far as rate adjustments, they're within expectations. We are not expecting a meter and proposing a meter adjustment for rates next year. There would be a minor adjustment in terms of lamp, ramp leases, all within kind of the, what had been approved and as part of the plans that were put forth previously with the city council. One thing, just kind of highlight this, we talked about this a couple of, probably a month or so ago, I believe, when we updated you on the public parking model. We had lost about 10% of all of our leases in the leased ramps due to COVID, primarily due to one tenant. But as you can see, we are trending in a positive direction. We had made some projections due to COVID. That's the gray line there. You can see, our blue line is our actual. So typically, we'd be about 75. As of July, we would have been about 75,000 higher, but we're making significant progress there. I I like to look at the parking meter revenue for downtown because it gives you a good estimate of what type of transactionary we're seeing there. And as of July, we are at about 75% of normal. So that gives you kind of a key indication of the utilization of our, our parking meters downtown. So and that was up from 71% in June. We had, the lowest point we hit was like 16%, I think, in the months of April and May. So significant improvement, and we're starting to see some slower improvements. So we are trending in the right direction there. As far as revenue, as I noted, it does include a small rate adjustment on the ramp side and for lots in 2021, but no meter adjustments there. Overall, the budget for parking is fairly flat to last year, keeping up with normal business and continuing to find additional efficiencies. Our public parking team has done a great job of enhancing our technologies, using some of those frictionless systems that have been included in the new ramp that's open, but in the Washington Pavilion ramp as well, that has been received, been well-received by both the tenants and those, just using it on an hourly basis. So those have been good improvements. We've invested significantly in the maintenance of those ramps over the years. So we've been able to back off of that a little bit here in the present year due to some of those revenue reductions that we've seen. And as you can see, we do see a reduction of our debt service. That's based on the original amortization that was put together. So our debt service is about $165,000 less next year. And we have about 12 years left to pay off that loan. So about 2032, I believe, is the last year of payments. So fairly short and abbreviated schedule for that. Moving on to general facilities, again, this is a newer area for the finance department. We took over facilities as well as public parking, I believe, in January of this year. So we're about seven months into serving as administrator for these two areas. This is the general facilities budget. So this incorporates the areas of City Hall, Carnegie, City Center, City Hall Annex in the Gray Bar Building. Most of the other facilities are are part of the budgets, or they're administered through the, the areas that they utilized. So primarily, so Parks and Rec facilities are generally within the Parks and Rec budgets as well. So you can see here, this lays out the, the budget breakdown for this particular, for these general facilities. There are not significant adjustments here. There is an adjustment for property liability insurance, and that's just based on valuations, as well as adding the city center. And of course, we've completed the third floor of the city center. So you have some adjustments to valuations there. We are adding small dollars for other minor needs and maintenance items for the city center as well. So there's a $25,000 adjustment for repairs and maintenance, and a $17,000 increase in supplies. Some of that is just shifting some of the furniture from the general administrative departments to general facilities. We see a $29,000 increase in rentals. That's that technology adjustment that's flowing through. And then we do have a 27,000, 27, almost $28,000 adjustment on utilities. And that's just truing up to what we've seen in terms of trending for the utility expenses. Then as far as the finance department goes, city continues to look for ways to invest in people and technology, and certainly finance is no different. You can see that our budget increases primarily made up of normal wage and benefit adjustments. The other major component of our continued efforts to utilize technology to help process and reconcile financial transactions. So we haven't, we haven't received, nor have we requested any additions in terms of FTEs for our department. One of the things that is incorporated into the budget is $15,000 to assist with the bank reconciliation process. This is to generate the data that we can download from the, our, our banking partner, download it into our system, assimilate with our accounting system to make the bank reconciliation process much easier. One wouldn't think reconciling your bank statement would be difficult, but when you're thinking about the fact that most all of the transactions of the city run through one account, and we're talking about thousands of transactions a month, there is a lot. We probably dedicate more than one-half of an FTE just to that process constantly and consistently. So we've been working on a project to try to make that more efficient, to free up some of our staffing time for other duties, as we see that's the best utilization of that. And so this is part of that effort. We're also working on implementing some technology improvements related to purchasing card allocations. We spend a great deal of time allocating the transactions that come through on the purchasing cards. The number of transactions that are coming through on purchasing cards has increased exponentially over time. And so being able to automate that process and allow the end user to do more of that allocation has been a, one of our primary goals over the next year. That will also allow some travel aspects to it as well, allowing users to do, handle more of their travel components, freeing up some of their travel coordinators from handling those responsibilities. So looking to make that more efficient over time as well. You can see that we also have the rentals increased, and that's about 40,000. And that's just that net neutral general fund allocation, but just happens to increase our budget relative to our, the amount of technology that we're utilizing. So that, that, those are the primary areas that you see adjustments as far as the finance budget, what I call core finance there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on those particular divisions.
Questions. Counselor Stark?
Yes, thank you, Director. Couple of things on the, the public parking side of things. Will we be seeing a ribbon cutting or some kind of ceremony opening the new parking ramp?
I don't think we scheduled one of those yet. We just had a soft opening where we opened it. We do have several hundred leases that have moved over into that facility now. But I don't think we planned anything formal other than that.
One of the other things that that I was looking at is that you're forecasting a 1% increase in charges for the facilities to gather, all of the, the public parking facilities together. And then you use the number of roughly 10% that they're down. So would you have, in a different year, I'm trying not to use the new normal term. So in a different year, would you have maybe looked at 11% increase in, in revenue?
You know, I don't know that there's a great answer to that. Certainly, we're cognizant of some of the challenges that we've seen in the public parking. But with the current trending that we're seeing, I, I think we're, we're getting back to a more normalized environment. Certainly, with the active activity that we've seen downtown, and then people returning back to their offices more readily here over the next several months, I would expect that we'll be closer to normal. But I don't know that we would have modified our adjustments based on that.
Okay. It just, it appears that you're a little more bullish in some of the financial projections that you've made through the, the whole budget, where this is maybe a little less than optimistic than in, in the projections that you made in other places. And so.
Well, we're, we're attempting to be conservative, particularly with this model. Obviously, we had to put some additional funds into the Village on the River. That was put in cash from this particular fund. And so we, we watched this one a little bit more closely, just to monitor it. So we do want to be more on the conservative side rather than be overly optimistic.
Where, following up then with that, where are we at with attorney fees and some of the litigation fees with the additional million and a half that we allocated? Are we still, are there additional attorney fees planned for 2021? I mean, do we have a kind of a, a plan of how we're going forward with that process?
Most of that has run, I think, through the, the project fund at this point. But that, those, those fees weren't part of the additional million and a half requested. That was primarily for actual construction changes that had to be made as a standalone parking ramp. But I don't, there hasn't been a significant amount of, of expenses related specifically to legal at this time.
Makes sense. Are we looking at doing something to, at least in the short term, make the facility look a little better? The gravel is, is pretty ugly. The last time I drove by there, it's been a week. I mean, the weeds are starting to grow up. And now that it's our responsibility, we've obviously kind of closed on that process. So I wouldn't mind doing that. But is there a plan like for a, a call for art or some kind of temporary mural signage? I mean, you, you hear lots of different ideas, but.
We've had some discussions, and we've been approached on some ideas to that, too. So we're very early in that. Our first priority was to finish the completion of the, the primary construction so that it could open, so that many people were waiting for it to be open, particularly surrounding businesses. So that was our first and foremost priority was to finish that portion of the project. But now we are having some discussions about how to manage that, that south-facing wall.
It, it's kind of the, that point where we need to at least allocate some money or include it in the budget if that's something we're looking forward to. So I mean, it seems like that would be one of the, the places where we would at least be starting from this part of it to, to get something on paper, at least to, to move forward with that.
Yeah, we wanted to close out the project, kind of make sure we were landing where we expected in terms of total cost there. So.
Other questions? Questions on the phone?
Counselor Neitz?
Yes, Counselor Brecky.
I just wanted to add a comment to, to Director Pritchard. I, too, have really been enjoying, for the first time ever, enjoying reading the budget this year because so many of my questions were answered in the way that you utilized the new format, by kind of anticipating, I think, what our questions might be when there were significant, you know, percentage increases or decreases on line items. So thank you so much for that. And I just, I wanted to add my two cents to that. I really appreciate how you did that. And I think it is going to, it is very user-friendly. And I think it's going to be very helpful for the public as well. So thanks and kudos to your team for their hard work and, and just a really new, new look and much more easy to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And again, I, I want to kind of stand up the team that, that pulled this together because they really did vision this out and built this in over the course of really the last nine months, pulling this together. So they did, did a great job. So I appreciate the comment.
I have a, great. And I do have a couple parking-related questions. First of all, I will say that the administration is actively looking at options for that area and potentially the, the side of the, the ramp. And so it's, it's ongoing. So stay tuned for that, hopefully. As it relates to parking, what, what kind of fleet do they have? I mean, vehicles, how many vehicles do they have? Because they must, because they're going to have a vehicle that's going to drive through the ramps to be able to check. And what other vehicles do they have?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I do know that they have a, a certain number of fleet. I think what you're referring to is, is kind of that frictionless system. So one of the pieces of technology that's been upgraded is being able to equip some of those fleet vehicles. They can essentially drive through, check the license systems, and also check them against the, the frictionless system to see if, whether they paid or not. It will make it much easier for them to go ahead and assess parking patrol tickets and so forth. So that has made it a lot easier than walking those ramps, especially seven stories in a new ramp. Could be a little challenging, but it's a lot more efficient that way. But I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many vehicles they have. Not, not a large number.
And then parking has some, some buildings and storage facilities. I believe they have one maybe up by the LEC, about Fourth Street, potentially. Maybe I'm wrong. What, what do they all have for? all have for, and what do they use them for?
Primarily used for parking, but it's also shared with centralized facilities. So centralized facilities uses it a little bit for storage. So if they're moving equipment or they're doing some repairs and so forth, they also have a shop out there that they work out of. So it is kind of jointly utilized by both public parking and centralized facilities maintenance.
And then, as far as the waiting list goes, there's a waiting list. Do we know how quote-unquote "fresh" that is? I mean, as far as, somebody might put themselves on a waiting list four years ago and then they've lost interest. Do we know how many, do we go down that list to know how many are actively looking?
I think they refresh it pretty often. Now, I don't, you know, with the move of people to the new Village on the River ramp, that's going to free up obviously some capacity at the Block 11 and the First Avenue ramp. So with those changes, I think that's going to decrease that list significantly as they begin shifting around. But I know that Matt and his team with Public Parking, they do a great job of trying to keep that list and so forth refreshed, so.
And we're, we've seen 200 and plus move into the new ramp.
Correct, yep.
And then, and then obviously, because of that, people will be, spots will free up in other ones, and I might be farther out in downtown, and I might move to Block 11 because I've been waiting for that, so we'll probably see some shuffling going on for a while.
Yeah, for example, like CNA, not CNA Shuriti, but the old CNA Shuriti building, the name's escaping me, but they've had a lot of parking leases in the 8th and Dakota Ranch, Experian, not Experian, but they would move to Block 11 and so forth because they've been looking for areas that have been closer to their facility. So, and I know they're working with potentially another larger tenant downtown to add some leases as well, so there could be some more positive news coming.
Okay, and then finally, with the, so we had a construction manager at risk, which means you have the, the project may be done, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the quote-unquote "project" closes out. It could be months or a few years. Do we have money remaining in the contractor contingency? How much of that is, and will that be held by the contractor for a few years before they release it? Do we have contingency? What's left in that fund and what's the status?
So there is both contractor and owner contingency remaining. Some of that, the latest change orders, I believe there is even a couple of small change orders on tonight's notice agenda for the council, I think 20,000. So they've been releasing the contractor contingency with some of those change orders, offsetting them, but there is still some left. So as they close that out, we would see the remainder of that coming back to the city as well. That's been incorporated into the projections for the parking ramp, just for the parking enterprise fund, so we've taken those into account, but we do have owner and project contingency that is remaining.
So that's built into the model? That's not some windfall as it?
Yeah, we will recover once it's completed, because there really shouldn't be a lot of additional changes now that is essentially completed. Now, it's just punchless items and closing out the project.
Okay, very good. So it looks like we're about 18 minutes early, so we made it through. So thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great night. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, we got to do public input, don't we? Yeah, I need to do that. I need to follow state law. So if there's anybody that has any public input, you can speak for up to five minutes. Seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.